Yes.
Yes. Let's just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under the indivisible liberty and justice throne. If you all bow your heads and join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father.
Good morning. Thou art in heaven, thou shalt be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Hey, good morning. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, May twenty first at ten thirty a.m. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, May twenty second, also at ten thirty a.m. in this room. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated May seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and the regular meeting dated May eighth, two thousand and twenty four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh. No, until they're, the court case is properly adjudicated, I, I really think that we're not doing things properly by having video minutes that skip, and I, I just disagree with this. So, no.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve. Second.
For Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Do you have today's updated agenda?
It was on your, on the day.
Um, this is.
That's May eighth, that's last week's.
Yeah. It, and, and when you change the agenda and it's during the workday, can you please put it in our mailboxes instead of waiting until?
It wasn't changed till the end of the day.
Yeah, you, you can put it in our mailbox, but let me see which one it is, hang on. I, I've asked before for that, I know that you'll never get to this one.
Sitting right in front of you when you came in.
Okay, it was on everybody's, it was on everybody's place setting when you came in.
Sorry, I just can't seem to locate it. So, here's. It'd be nice if, if we had them in advance. Again, please give them to us as soon as you change them. And if you know there's a change, no, please print them out.
I'm not going to argue about this. I just need your vote for item four.
Uh, uh, again, what I'm saying is, when you change the agenda, please make a copy of it and give them to us as soon as you change them.
She changed agenda at the end of the workday yesterday. She sent an email to all three of us, and you had a fresh copy sitting in front of you when you got into work today.
Ten fifteen this morning.
You, you wanted to drive it to your house last night?
Like, before she, y- you can stop with your annoying, disrespectful, condescending.
Changed it at the very end of the day, so you were not here.
She, she can put the, I've asked before, when you change it, print it, put it in my mailbox, replace the old one with the new one. It's, it's, it's a very basic clerical step, task that you just simply refuse to do.
Or you could just hit print like I did and like Mara did. If you wanted to read something last night, I did last night. I read it over last night, the new one, after she made, made the amendment, I hit print on my computer. It was very easy.
Or you could come to the workshops. Those are, that's useful.
I was, I was at the workshop remotely. Mara, what did you do at the, at the workshop? You just read everything, huh? Did you ask to see anything? You didn't see anything. I heard what you did.
Commissioner, you weren't here. You weren't here. I don't want to play these games with you today.
The agenda changing.
I don't want to play these games with you today. Let's move on from the good of the order, please.
Your, your smart ass comments, Mara.
I said you could come to the workshop.
Has nothing, how does that relate to?
Because you can ask questions at the workshops.
Relate to not having the agenda.
You can ask questions at the workshops.
Everything is the same. All they, all she did on the agenda change is move one item earlier. She moved it up to number eight from the end. That's the only change. Everything else is exactly the same. Not one word changed. It's the same agenda.
Okay, and the numbering is all off.
One number, one number. Move the last one to number eight.
Okay, so it's really polite, again, it's not, the fact that you guys are so ignorant and you prefer to argue instead of just having the clerk.
Who's arguing? You're arguing. We're trying to move on.
You're one of the smartest women in this room, honestly. You could figure out number eight.
Um, a- again, I am asking that the, I'm actually instructing the clerk to, when she changes the agenda before she leaves, to replace the previous one in my mailbox with the updated one. Can we, are, are you both going to agree with that or disagree with?
Oh, she emails it.
Does that, she emails it and she has it ready for you right here. Get here earlier and look it over instead of right at the last minute.
I'm asking.
You're here two minutes before.
No, I'm here in the afternoon and evening for several hours.
No one else is here.
Right, right. So, I'm asking again, are the two of you going to disagree with having her give the proper agenda?
Are you going to open your emails and hit print? That's all it takes.
I'm asking you to, are you, will you cause the clerk to make a copy of?
Causing the clerk to do anything.
Make her do anything on my own.
You provided the information that we have the same way. You, you, that's exactly what you're getting. You have it available to you.
So, if she changes it the day before.
She put it in your box.
She didn't.
Yes, she did.
No, she did not.
It's sitting out here.
She didn't put the updated one in my box. So, Mara, so maybe that's the disconnect. She did not give me the updated one in my mailbox.
So, because it's out here.
It wasn't out here. It was out here this morning.
They're all out here.
Last, yesterday before she left, she didn't put it. So, when I was going through and verifying everything and trying to cross-reference everything, I had the old one.
There's one agenda item that's different. It's the same thing.
Right, so I've asked on, so will you please have her do that?
Ridiculous. Let's stop and move on, please.
I'm asking if you will instruct the, the staff to.
I'm asking you to open your emails and hit print. That's all I'm asking you to do, as opposed to.
She made the amendment every week. War closes at four thirty. I don't expect to add more work on her, have to go make three copies of print. Something that's already emailed that you can hit print on yourself. I don't, I'm not going to instruct her to do that, no.
You're not.
It's like saying instructor going.
This is a game. Let's move on.
You're asking for something that doesn't make sense.
Let's move on.
Will you be civil, Mara?
Let's move on.
Will you be civil, Mara? Will you please?
Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
Will you?
Item number.
We are very.
No, I need your vote, Commissioner French.
I'm, can you read that again? I'm not sure which number it is because I have today's.
Item number four.
Okay, so they have.
It's changed until number eight.
Okay. Can you read it again, please?
To approve transfer of appropriations.
Okay, yes.
Item number five is to, item number five is to amend agenda, item number twenty two, as approved by the Board of Commissioners on April tenth, two thousand and twenty four, to award the lowest and best bid as submitted by Bechtel Controls, Inc. for the removal of disposal and replacement of current warehouse lighting at the Board of Elections with the total cost of thirty-two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number listed for transferring the money.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I'd like to ask for, uh, um, I don't know what it would be, maybe, maybe a point of personal privilege. Um, I saw for my, my personal ability to make sure that I'm prepared, I saw Mr. Werner come in, and I believe he was bringing copies or something. Do you have that so that I could look at it before we get to it?
Well, now you will get those from Gary. He just come in your office right before about today.
Okay. Okay, I just want, I was, I'm trying. Okay.
Item number six is to accept the resignation of Mrs. Terry Anderson, telecommunicator supervisor in the Trumbull County nine-one-one department effective May third, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion to approve. Second it.
Um, I, I wanted to have a little bit of discussion because I think that there's misinformation going on out there, and people keep on telling uh, the public that this is just something that happens in nine-one-one, although it is difficult to retain employees. Uh, her letter mentioned toxicity that she's never encountered. So many angry and belligerent employees and, um, in a dispatch center, uh, including toward, toward her, toward staff members. She also said there's no real control over their behavior, and that gives them freedom to take their anger out on the employees and each other. And I just want to underscore the fact that that's sort of the culture here in Trumbull County. When you don't, when you don't hold people accountable for their conduct and for their, how they bully or mistreat certain people and treat people differently, um, then that is, that is the reason why, um, people continue with their conduct, and that's what's been going on in our office. That's what's, that's what's happened, why, with, I have so many people, um, who are upset over at JFS and CSEA, and that's what happens over at nine-one-one, and that's most notable because of the importance of that, that job. So, I, I really am disappointed to see good employees leaving who would be staying but for the climate and toxicity in the workplace. It's, it's sad. These aren't people who are leaving because they're stressed because they don't like their job. They're people who are leaving who love their job but hate the environment.
We've lost two on this floor in the last year because of you, Commissioner. I remind you that.
That's not.
One of them went to the auditor's office and he'll, he'll come up here and testify.
And we lost one in H R.
We lost a clerk who, in her letter.
True, that's.
Oh, but you want to read the letters for the public to?
This is deflection. This is, this is deflection.
No, it's true.
Gaslighting. I'm not sure. Yeah, it has nothing to do.
Well, we'll bring in the letters and read them next week.
Record.
Right, okay.
For item number six, uh, Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and the county also has a policy that they are to be, um, investigating complaints of toxicity or any type of complaints they are supposed to be investigating. That is pursuant to our, our county's policy, and one of the reasons why the County Board of Commissioners might have to settle a case, uh, with Mr. Parks is because they didn't follow their own procedure. So, what I'd like to say is that I believe we need to have an investigation, uh, that is conducted with someone external. Um, that we've had Clemmons and Nelson, uh, do, Clemmons and Nelson can do an investigation, and I think we need to bring in them, someone outside to do that. In fact, I'm going to make him, I'm going to make a motion from the floor. I'm going to make a motion right now from the floor that, uh, an investigation be conducted and to the complaints from employees who are leaving and to the climate of the workplace in the nine-one-one center, and to be performed by Clemmons and Nelson. I'm making that motion.
Before we, before we have an investigation, have you talked to the department heads about this?
I made a motion. Is that a second?
No.
It's a discussion of the topic is an, is an automatic second.
Whatever.
Okay, if you want to, if you want to play that way, if that was a second, then I'll get into discussion too. We have department heads there.
Was.
You just said, you just said that was a second by.
Well, I want to make sure that the clerk is actually documenting. Did you document it as a second? And did you write down the, the?
What does that matter?
No, I didn't write the entire motion.
So, whenever someone makes a motion from the floor, the clerk is responsible for writing it down.
See, you get that off the recording, yes.
So that they can read it and it could be amended to say someone wants to modify it.
You just made it up, one of the two.
I, this is so problematic that we have the staff that doesn't understand their role as, as a clerk. That was a motion made from the floor. It should be written down so that it could be reread as it was presented.
Why don't you write it down? You're the ones saying it.
I'm, I'm not the clerk. The clerk needs to do that so that it can be modified because what happens in discussion is maybe someone says, well, I'll agree with it, but we need to change this. And if she doesn't have a current record while she's writing it down, then we, we don't have it.
Give it a rest, would you?
Pardon?
Give it a rest.
Give what a rest?
What, what you're doing here, this behavior is unacceptable completely.
Childish.
What's unacceptable?
The way you're behaving right now is unacceptable. Let's move on.
What, what? This is, I don't understand. What did you say?
You're making motions from the floor. You're not wanting to discuss. You're wanting to discuss. You don't know what you want to do.
Uh, can you explain what's, what's?
Would, would you like to have discussion now about the agenda item that you, that you presented?
My discussion on that is that we have two department heads working with.
Can you read the motion again?
See what I'm saying?
No, seriously, because it's who's seconding it. Who is seconding it for discussion?
Nobody officially is, but you said discussion starts, it causes a second, so I'll rule on that and say yes, that is. Your mo-, your motion was that we bring in someone from the outside, like Clemmons Nelson to investigate nine-one-one and the reports that they had. That was.
They weren't even taken for over a year.
Item number seven.
Wait, 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 we still got a motion on the floor. So, we're going to go through with that. We're going to finish discussion on it. And the discussion is, we have department heads that are working on the issue. We have commissioners here, three of us here. I went in there for four and a half hours. I encourage you to do the same. Commissioner Kay and Malasa could do the same. We're going to work with the department heads to see what we can do to get this thing rectified without having to just accuse management of being bad or bring an investigation in because employees left.
Okay, so the one of the.
You haven't been there in, in three years, in the building, and you're going to say call for an investigation. We never looked at it yourself.
One of, one of the problems that we have when people fail up instead of hiring people with qualifications is that, um, or they get promoted.
Questioning hiring Casey? You were all for, and you voted yes.
That's not, are you, are you done? Are you, are you capable of allowing?
I'm waiting to see. I'm trying to figure out who you're trying to criticize.
Are you capable?
Who you're trying to blame besides yourself.
Are you capable of allowing a woman to speak uninterrupted?
Absolutely.
Okay, can, can we start that now?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, what happens is that someone might be very good at their job, and, uh, because they're good at performing their job, they end up in management, but they don't have managerial skills. They've never been formally trained or gone to any informal, any training. And so then, they are now the ones trying to uh, do performance evaluations, which, which aren't going to work because if you read the, the resignation letter, that was the crux of what she complained about was that there were things being placed in her file. Management doesn't, if management doesn't know the first thing about H R or, um, performance evaluations, then they're doing a disservice, and that's one of the reasons why this employee left. So, I know last week you said you talked to them about doing performance employee evaluations.
Right.
But you had, but that doesn't matter if you don't have the staff who's capable of doing it the right way, and all they've ever been is a dispatcher. You actually need to have people and hire people and think about those things when you're structuring and restructuring and advancing people because talent outside of the ability to dispatch is required in order to create a good work environment and to be able to rank people. It's just.
So, because they don't, she doesn't have a management background, she doesn't have a management degree, is that what you're saying?
I, that's not what I said.
What are you saying then?
I look at the, uh, if you look at the complaint, uh, or I'm sorry, the, the resignation letter, you'll see exactly what happened, and whoever it was, it might have been, I, I'm not sure which employee it was who put the things in her file without, without telling her and, uh, who referenced things and had her sign off on something she wasn't aware. I, I'm not sure who did that. It might have been one of the middle management people, might have been Patty. I really don't know. But the point is, we need to make sure that we have people qualified to do that, and having someone externally perform, uh, an investigation would be most appropriate because if someone's external, then they can come in and identify what's going on uh, without having personal bias or, um, you know, just kind of how.
So, we're going to have an investigation on the word of one person.
It's not.
That, 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 that may be a disgruntled employee. We don't know because you haven't talked to the department head yet. So, there's two sides to the story, is what I'm saying. There's, there's one side with, with, with the worker, and there's another side with management. I suggest you at least talk to management about that because you can get another side of the story.
Or talk to the employee.
I've been here for years and had numerous people reach out to me and talk to me from not just nine-one-one, but other places where they know that nothing's going to happen because there is not progressive discipline. There's no verbal warnings. There's no written warnings, uh, and people, um, I mean, this lady put it quite eloquently when she, she, in her letter, she, I mean, she sat down and wrote a, a lengthy explanation as to why she was leaving, and the last two people who left are not, again, leaving because of their job or the stress of their job.
She was the supervisor. She was the one supervising.
Okay.
She was.
Okay.
That was her title. She was supervisor. Yeah. All right, so call, call a vote on her motion from the floor.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
No.
Mr. Malloy.
No.
Item number seven is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Peyton Carafa as telecommunicator with the Trumbull nine-one-one department to be compensated at the two-year starting wage of twenty doll, twenty point five-five-seven per CBA effective Sunday, June second, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Uh, I'd like to have some discussion on this one as well. Did you guys read the, um, file on this hire? I don't think you did. So, you guys are here to rubber, rubber stamp. I actually read.
Um, I've forced someone to rubber stamp a, a department head that is hiring someone that went through the whole process, the background check and the drug screen. They know nine-one-one better than I know it or better than you know it. So, I'm going to trust our management on their hire here.
Okay, so, did, did anyone read it and identify anything?
A workshop, Commissioner. If you read it, please say what you want to say, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so if I read it, so obviously, I'm the only one who has, um.
Again, you're making assumptions.
So, then what, did you see anything funny about it?
I'm not answering your question. Go ahead with your.
Right, because I heard the workshop and you said nothing.
For you, Commissioner, say what you want to say.
Be reviewing things instead of just rubber stamping.
And you could stop.
There's a problem with.
Being an impediment to these meetings and come to the workshop if you have questions.
Okay, what do you, what do you have to say about Mr. Carafa?
More people, more people participate in this meeting, and I think it's important to bring up these things here. Um.
No, they don't.
So.
We have every department head at our meetings.
Right, okay, so listed on his resume were character witnesses or were, I'm sorry, they were listed as references, and a portion of the documentation regarding the employee was related to their character references, and I don't think that that's uh, appropriate. It's not verifiable, and it's extremely political. There's an elected official who's been elected for over forty years who recommended the person, and it says, come, quote, and this is a quote, "comes from a good family." So, a character wit- witness was referenced, and they're really putting that on as if it bears any weight that, uh, an elected official says that he comes from a good family? I mean, there's no verification of this. We really need to be, and, and I'm not disagreeing with hiring this person at all, but what I'm disagreeing with is the fact that we're looking at, we're, we're giving that any type of weight. If, if we're going to look at references, they should be related to past employment, right? Past employment or, um, someone who's had, if they volunteered, or a mentor from an educational center or something like that. But I think that just using politicians on your resumes and saying, you know, "comes from a good family" isn't necessarily the direction we need to go, and, um, I, 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 I think that, um, those shouldn't even be considered or factored in or listed on the, on the, um, documentation that's in the file for the employees because it looks very bad.
Two weeks ago, you said, you sat up here and said, we were talking about nine-one-one employees, they don't even need to have a high school degree, that, 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 you kind of said they were the lowest of the low. And now you're saying that the references, their things don't make any difference on there. I, I don't, I don't understand.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm, I'm saying two weeks ago, you were putting, you were putting them down as being one of the lowest level employees.
About me or are you talking about?
I'm talking about employees that are putting in for this job, and now you're up here saying that because they, someone said that he came from a good family, you're assuming that's why they got hired? Did you, did you look at any of the other qualifications? Were there anything else?
Think you heard me. I didn't say that.
Is there anywhere near that says that's why he got hired at all, that that meant anything?
That's not what I said.
Casey's not even from this county. He's been here less than six months. He's not politically tied to anybody in this county.
I understand, but maybe it would be good for her to realize, or I, 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 I'm just saying, there's a.
How are you going to stop people from putting that on there?
Say that, well, it shouldn't be considered. The fact that the.
How do you know it was considered? You're assuming.
Did you, did you guys not read that? Did you guys not?
You're assuming that that went into the scoring process, into the interview process.
It did, because you didn't read it, honey.
Know.
Do you want me to pull it out because you didn't?
Yeah, please do. The proof of it, that that went into the scoring of this. You don't have it. You're making it up.
I'm making it up?
Yes.
What am I making up?
You're making up that that's somehow.
She documented.
I'd like to see the root.
What's documented? That he, you know, referenced down? Person put a reference down?
Rather than just.
How are you going to stop that?
Rather than just recognizing it and ignoring it and moving on to the things that qualify a person.
How do you know they didn't do that?
She wrote it, she.
How do you know they didn't do that at nine-one-one? How do you know they didn't do that at nine one one?
Cause she actually wrote a page about, she wrote a page about every reference and you didn't read it or you would have seen it.
A page about every ref-
Yes, she did.
Where are those pages?
Uh, in your emails. Why don't you just hit print?
They're not in my emails. There is no page about the references.
Yes, there is.
No, there isn't.
Yes.
That's a lie. Please produce them.
I don't have anything in my email, so nothing just went to you.
No, it's, it's in the agenda where the agenda items are uploaded, the agenda item from Casey.
She has, she talks about the references.
Yes.
No, she doesn't.
Yes, she does.
Please provide those.
Okay, uh, do you, are you serious?
Yes.
Are you gonna?
I'll do point of personal privilege. You can pull it up and find it, find the reference where-
Please do.
Okay.
Talks about the references.
Yeah, there's a page of everyone.
Okay, pull it up.
Why don't you, the, the, the thing is you talk about this workshop as if you actually do something. And if you were actually doing your job at the workshop, you would be going over those things.
Why don't you do your job and come to the workshop?
You would actually be going over those with the department.
But here's the, here's the thing. You have every opportunity to attend it and bring up all these things.
Come to a workshop to, to work. You listen to the workshop to crit, to critique and figure out, oh, they didn't do that. Oh, I got you. You didn't do that. I'm gonna bring this up. Oh, I'm gonna bring this up. They didn't do that.
Let's find those uh, references that she talks about.
Participate in the workshop and sit and look up everything at the same time because you guys are not giving me the page.
Casey talked about each reference.
Okay, hang on a minute. I'll, I'll, I'll find them. Um, does anyone in IT know which numbers Casey was? Because it's very hard to figure out. Uh, or can we, can we put this on the screen, please? You guys wanna do it? Can we actually do it properly? Will you please put it on the screen? Uh, no, the, my email's on the screen, please. They're asking, they're saying that it's not, doesn't exist. No, 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 no. I want this to be seen by everyone.
And seeing that it's scored. I wanna see that it was scored.
But somehow these references entered into this score.
That's not what you said. You said, I said that there's a page written on-
About the references.
On, on every, there's a page about every reference.
So that, so that factors into the score.
So you're saying Casey did due diligence and followed the references.
On the screen. If I'm gonna look this up because they didn't see it, I wanna make sure that everyone gets to see it who's, who's watching.
Mister, you are wasting taxpayer dollars. One minute-
And time.
So just to make it clear for everybody, we wanna show your laptop with your information on the screen.
Yes.
Please have your laptop.
Okay. There's a page for every single, she wrote a page for every character wi- character reference, which is not, should not be in a file if it's just based on-
I've seen many, many, many resumes of people who use references.
All the time.
Oh, so just a minute ago, you said that it wasn't on there and then I think-
I'm saying that's not-
But they don't, our director's not writing a synopsis of those character witnesses.
About, yes, about, about each one and what they said about the person. Yeah.
About what they said about the person? Okay.
You just said that you didn't receive it, so.
No.
And that it doesn't-
She's always said that it entered into the rubric. You factored it in the scoring.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. That's what I can test.
No.
Commissioner, I, I, I would like to have that back by you. Thank you.
Okay, which one would be the agenda item from Casey?
It would be one of the Trumbull County, no replies.
Which one is it? Just so everyone can see, that, that's what I'm seeing on my um, that's why it's impossible. Wait, do you want to dismiss? Yes. Uh, this is why it's impossible to match everything up because our agenda items are numbered one through thirty, for example. And when they're coming to us, as you see, there's no rhyme or reason. Three oh two, three oh four, three oh one.
Clearly shows you did get a copy of the agenda email to you because that's right up there big. So you could have hit print on that.
You know, you too.
Probably the second one. You just went by it.
Which one do you think it is?
Back it up. There were two of them there for nine one one.
Number? Just ninety?
Go, go up about four, right there.
That one?
Yeah, that one or the one above it.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You can't tell. And then you're-
You gotta open.
Hey, you gotta open.
We're clicking on all of these and trying to play matches.
You gotta, it's right there. You got it.
You guys don't read them.
You got it right there.
Cause you guys, this is probably new to you because it's clear that you didn't look at anything.
And you know, we have an external agency that does screen applicants and do the background checks, right? It's an owner shares department. It's an outside, outside agency.
Okay. The applicant is outgoing and communicates with, well, with others. He comes from a good family and is a good kid. I mean, Mike O'Brien, sixty, sixty-fourth state-
And we asked for a character reference on there, on the application. So we asked for it. We did. So we're, we're gonna shame the kid for following the instructions?
It's not, it, it wasn't on the application. What I'm saying-
I don't understand.
I mean, it's not. It's right there. You're reading it. That's, this isn't something he provided.
Where's the paragraph that you said is on there or the, or the whole thing that you said? That's it?
There's a page for every single, every person who they're saying is a, is a, is a reference.
Okay.
And that's not relevant. And it actually looks bad to say that people are being recommended.
But you can act references?
Yeah, the references, I'm, I'm talking maybe-
Do you think when Mike O'Brien recommends to Casey means a hill of beans for anything?
Am I, am I-
She's gonna take that with anything?
Do you guys understand what I just said? What I said is our application process needs to be modified so that any wit, any references are related to employment, education or professional experience. Does that make sense?
Then make a motion, then make a recommendation.
Okay.
Then make a new application.
I am making a motion to-
Make the application first and then we'll, we'll-
Put it in writing for this. You're not, you're just gonna throw something.
I don't know what this is gonna accomplish.
Make a change like that. And you're gonna work with HR to do it, if you're gonna do it.
If, what, what did you say? I'm sorry, I missed that. What did you-
I said, if you're gonna do it, you have to work with HR to do it because this is their department handling your applications.
This is nonsense, Commissioner. Can we move on?
We are-
Waste of everybody's time and energy here.
I am just making-
I'm looking for the paragraph. I'm looking for the whole-
Looking for the whole write-up you said. There's nothing.
You said, you said they did a whole page on it. The whole, the whole-
This is the page, character reference number one, character reference.
No, you said on each character reference, there was a, there was a page.
There is, see?
But what, what does that have to do with anything?
It has absolutely nothing to do with the person's capability of working. And what we should have is reference, either references related to professional background or educational background, something professional.
Here's what I'm gonna let you know. When you apply for a job, you put down references. It's not up to the applicant to know, oh, I shouldn't put down this, this reference. And guess what? When the, when the department-
Are you stupid, Mara?
Let me finish.
I don't think you understand.
And when the department head sees those, they're gonna call those references.
We can actually say professional references only, not personal references, professional references only. If you, if you want to do that because it's not required.
How do you know they don't know them in a professional manner? How do you know that?
Cause they said it. They, they, they actually say it.
You make assumptions. If A, then B. That's not how all this works all the time.
I'll tell you how because on his resume, it actually says personal references, not professional references. I'll show you that. And that's how we know.
And this is from an outside agency doing this. Armor risk management gave them that. The outside agency that we pay to do a background check, that's what that was.
That wasn't even us.
Nothing to do with us. It's not even our board.
With us.
You just went all around, around, around with something that's something-
That has nothing to do with us. It wasn't even our department.
It's not-
You realize how you were looking to the whole world watching this right now?
Like a fool.
Your couple of fans on there are gonna laugh. Mr. Pap's gonna laugh. The rest of the world is out here saying, what the heck?
What is wrong here?
What is wrong with her?
I just wanna do things a little bit better and I don't think that we should be having anything in anyone's personnel file that says that they were recommended from an elected official because they were from a good family. I just think that that looks bad and we should eliminate that from our application process. Or tell whoever it is who's-
You as a commissioner, I would get rid, get this down. You got the kid's personal information, his social security number and other things that probably aren't privy to the world that you have posted up there right now on a medical form right there.
And you talk about HIPAA violations all the time.
Well.
But you have his information on his screen in a public meeting.
Yeah, I, this is like, I hope everyone, whoever doesn't-
Let's move on. This is ridiculous.
Behavior. I feel bad. That's why he's single and I feel bad for whoever he's with because these are classic narcissistic gaslighting.
I'm gonna take the vote for item seven, which is the employment of Mr. Peyton Karafa.
Did you just criticize me for being single over Maras with missed restraining orders from two, a husband and a boyfriend?
We can bring up lots of things there.
Okay.
The police report said, uh, I'm not even gonna get into it.
Let's not get into it.
I'm not even gonna get into it.
Not gonna roll around in the mud with a pig.
Wow.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds restroom upgrade. And commissioners on the next page, near the top, the addition of the continuous concrete footing, a masonry foundation wall and the installation of half-inch EPI plastic wall panel along the interior of the proposed restroom. That increases twenty-five thousand, five hundred, twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And then to provide a dedicated two hundred amp electric service at the commercial building to power the proposed restroom upgrade. That increases twelve thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty cents. And then below that in three, the project is hereby authorized and shall be paid, paid for from the ARPA funds and therefore the prior amount authorized in the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four resolution to Integra Excavating LLC shall be increased by the following amount, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred, thirty-five dollars and sixty-two cents.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nine is to approve change order number one with Integra Excavating LLC for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds Commercial Building Restroom Upgrade Project in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred, twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents revising the total contract amount to two hundred, twenty-five thousand, five hundred, sixteen dollars and twelve cents. Change order number one is necessary for the addition of a continuous concrete footing, masonry foundation wall and the installation of half-inch EPI plastic wall panel along the interior of the proposed restroom and is subject to approval by ARPA Legal Counsel.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
And item number ten is to approve change order number two with Integra Excavating LLC for the Trumbull County Fairgrounds Commercial Building Restroom Upgrade in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty cents revising the total contract amount to two hundred, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and twelve cents. Change order number two is necessary to provide a dedicated two hundred amp electrical service at the commercial building to power the proposed restroom upgrade and is subject to approval from the ARPA Legal Counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to award the lowest responsive, responsible bid received to Yankee Clipper Company, Inc. For the twenty twenty-four road pavement marking program in the amount of two hundred, forty thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars and fifty cents. And to enter into a contract for said project, this project includes applying- this project includes-
Let her finish reading the motion and we'll do that.
Then I'll grant that. Finish reading.
This project includes applying one hundred ninety-nine point nine six seven miles of center line and two hundred, sixty-one point six five six miles of edge line on seventy-one county roads.
Oh, we're waiting, Commissioner.
Yeah, we'll wait and we'll give her a chance to get her glasses. She was unprepared. Sorry, you guys have to go through this.
Yeah, I apologize.
I apologize to the township trustees also that left because they were frustrated.
I will make a motion to approve on agenda item eleven.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to receive and place on file the Trumbull County Engineers twenty twenty-three annual report.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to adopt a resolution renewing Trumbull County's participation, all departments in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program. Ohio Revised Code Section five five one three point zero one B provides the opportunity for counties, townships and municipal corporations to participate in contracts of the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of machinery, materials, supplies or other articles. Renewal period will be effective for an additional two years commencing July twelfth, twenty twenty-four and expiring July twelfth, twenty twenty-six. And in order for Trumbull County to participate in this program, this resolution must be renewed every two years.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to approve the first extension to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five traffic signal maintenance contract with Main Light Electric Company, Inc. For an additional twelve-month period commencing with the expiration date of the current contract of July sixth, twenty twenty-four and ending July sixth, twenty twenty-five. All other terms of the existing contract will remain the same. The contract is in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the TRU County Highway twelve Chestnut Ridge Road Resurfacing Project. The project includes the resurfacing of Chestnut Ridge Road, County Highway twelve and Hubbard Township between US sixty-two and Hubbard Masonry Road.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies and property owners as listed. And those are Aqua Ohio, James and Tamara Haney, Custom Utilicom, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to move overweight equipment over Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed, Wolf House Movers LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, to receive and place on file the Trumbull County Transit Operating and Financial Report for January, February and March of twenty twenty-four. And to place on file the Western Reserve Transit Authority Operating and Financial Report for March and April of twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes. Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation on Saturday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Announcing a public meeting for the analysis of impediments to Fair Housing Choice twenty twenty four plan update. The AI plan is a required element of the Community Development Block Grant Program and Trumbull County is partnering with the cities of Niles and Warren to conduct an update at the current AI completed in two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalinas.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize the Board of Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the Gerard Multi Generational Center Jim Roof Project as part of the Community Development Block Grant Community Development Program, BF two, three, ICS one, project four, active, activity two, one time in a newspaper of general circulation and also posted on Demand Star on Thursday, May twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalinas.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes. Item twenty. I'd like to make a motion to table this item, given the fact, I, I'd just like to make a motion to table this.
Reasoning?
Is, could you sec- second it?
No, I'm asking you for clarification in your reasoning. When you make a motion, you have, do you have reasoning when you do a motion?
That's not correct. Where does it say that in rubber?
It does say in rubber rules of orders.
No.
You have to, if you're making a motion, you have to state why, the purpose.
No, that's incorrect.
Okay.
If you'd like to second it for discussion, that's the way the parliamentary procedure is. And then we can have the discussion as to.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item number twenty one is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed proposals for the Trumbull County Highway Engineers Office Upgrade. The upgrade will include new windows, new mechanical systems and new electrical panels.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalinas.
This doesn't exist anywhere. We, we, the board hasn't been provided this. It, there was, uh, at yesterday's pretend workshop. Morrow even said nothing, like he didn't ask for any copies of it. The, the clerk didn't have any copies of anything that were provided to us. We absolutely are voting on something that we have not been provided. We do not have it. And I would, that's why I wanted to table it because I think that it's important that we, um, that we look at what we're voting on. Call me silly.
Saying exactly what we're voting on.
Uh, do you have a copy of it? Cause you, I know you don't, cause I don't either unless they're just giving them in, in, in paper to you and not me because they certainly didn't email it.
I don't want to hold up the county engineer anymore than we already did. We, there's a big delay on the building that he's been waiting long enough for windows and heat here.
Can we, um, can we, how about this? Can we just take a moment in order to allow uh, the clerk or someone in our office to provide us with what we're voting on and then we can move it to the end just so I can have it. We can all have an opportunity to read it that way because no one has. Would you like to do that? Cause I would like to do that.
The advertisement for sealed proposals, that's what you want to see?
I don't have any, it says.
It's saying exactly what it's advertising for.
It doesn't say, it, it doesn't show what's actually included in it. And I understand that you're.
Will include new windows, mechanical systems and new electrical panels.
How many? How much? Do we have an estimate?
That, that's already been discussed.
Two years.
That's already been discussed.
They've discussed it many, many times that we haven't received anything to see what the ultimate, um, outcome was. And I would like to be able to see that before I vote on it. I, is that okay? Can we, can we please just wait until the end and ask someone in the office to give me a copy, all of us a copy so we can see what we're voting on today or?
I'm very confident in voting on this.
And just reading on it without looking, okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalinas.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Only because I have not received anything in email or paper or a- anything related to this agenda item, I have to abstain. I know that this needs done, but I think that as a commissioner, we have to do due diligence to make sure that what was being put out is covered. You know, it could be possible that there's something in there that's missing or we need to do a little bit more or, 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 or anything could be possible, but we should be looking at what we're voting on. And I, I, again, call me silly, but I'm abstaining because no commissioner has seen.
Again, we've discussed this at length at workshops, exactly the specs of what we need to do.
Right. Discussing is different than us actually receiving something to review and this is going.
That's fine. Hold up the project. That's good.
Does a clerk have, it's not holding it up. I'm asking if you could actually give it to us so we can vote on it at the end of the meeting.
Here's what would be good. Here's what would be.
For this.
Here's what would be perfect. If you'd come to the workshop and ask for these things instead of coming to the meeting and abstaining.
You didn't ask for it. You didn't ask any.
I'm comfortable moving forward.
Yesterday, you didn't either. And Danny wasn't even here yesterday, so.
Here's the thing, Commissioner. If you have questions on it, come to the meetings and don't make the meetings a show.
I've asked for a copy of everything that we vote on. That is not.
Okay, let's move on.
And I think.
Sinking in, I don't think so.
On every elected official who votes on things without even reading them.
We've discussed ad nauseam. You haven't been here.
That has nothing, we don't have a copy. Does the clerk even have a copy of what's going out for bid? Does the clerk?
Mike Slawinski and Bill Hart have been working on this for a year.
Is she just keeping it from all of us? Not just me this time, but everyone? Do you have this, Lisa?
Move on.
Lisa, do we?
Just move on.
Item twenty two is to approve the detailed drawings for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as County Project Number seven dash S dash twenty two in the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Sub District.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Um, this is for, for discussion purposes. Um, did you guys, it says that this, what is the agenda item again? I'm sorry. The page numbers. The pages are different too. Um, to approve the detail, did anyone look at the detailed drawings? Am I the only one again?
Are you an engineer? Are you a civil engineer now? You're gonna say that we should be able to read them and understand them?
Oh my god.
That has nothing that has anything to do with commissioners.
Look at, I'm just saying that that's the problem is I, I'm just underscoring the fact that you, that you guys just vote blindly. Because I know that that wasn't given to the Board of Commissioners and I had to request it separately.
If they gave it to me, it'd be, I might as well read hieroglyphics or Egyptian.
Exactly.
I can't read civil drawings. Neither can you.
You're that dumb.
No, I, I'm not an engineer.
And neither are you, Commissioner.
Do the measurements on there? You want to break out my, uh, protractor and do things? Commissioner, this is, this is a highly skilled uh, qualification. The engineer wrote these drawings. If he wrote the drawings.
Gonna critique him.
And, and, and I'm gonna critique and say, oh, no, no, you gotta make a left angle here, not here.
Is that what we said? Are you dumb? Like, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there just to make sure that it exists and that it was recommended.
No, I think Gary made it up.
He made it up out of thin air.
Voting on some, he made it up. He's got a drone on.
All the funding sources for Crane Drive have already been secured, but yeah, we're making it all up. There's no drugs.
To make sure that it exists, to see that it's there, to see that it was recommended and signed off by the consulting engineer. That is something that art, we should just be doing. An administrator would do that in an absence of a county administrator. We are the administrators, but unfortunately you guys aren't.
You're picking on this because of the sanitary engineer. You could have went through
No.
Seven previous things and said, well, I didn't see this. I didn't read this. I didn't read the engineer's full yearly report.
Are you?
How do you know he wrote it?
What are you talking about, Danny?
You voted on that earlier.
What are you talking about?
I see the.
What are?
Engine, highway engineers report. Did you read that?
I don't understand what you're saying.
Did you see that that even exists just like this?
Yes, I did. Did you? Evidently you didn't.
Oh, you read it. You read the engineer's, uh, his annual report.
Very nicely done.
Oh, wow.
It's in your email. You have to read it.
Okay.
But, but what I, what I am saying is that not, nobody on the board except for myself actually read it. I'm not saying, I'm not picking on sanitary engineers department. And what I'm picking on is the, underscoring is the fact that neither of you even verified that this existed, that it was approved and from our.
We're not auditors, Commissioner. Do you read what you come?
We're not auditors and we're not engineers.
Stamper's is what you are.
Even if you looked at it, you wouldn't know what you were looking at.
Really?
Yes, you're not an engineer.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you should work over there then with Scott.
You don't want to look at anything that you vote on. I understand. It's too much.
Commissioner, you were just nitpicking every little thing. I mean, it's not making you look better, but.
If you want to talk about Crane Drive, let's talk about Crane Drive right now. Do you know where the funding sources are coming from from this? Do you know? Do you know, Commissioner? Have you read anything about it? Do you know that the CDBG grant isn't gonna qualify for this and we may have to get more ARPA money? Do you know that? You don't know that. You know the little, you know this stuff. This stuff gotcha stuff, but you don't know the nuts and bolts of stuff. You want to sit up here and pontificate about, oh, you're the only one who does the work, but you know nothing about actually what's going on.
Do you know that the Trumbull County's plans that are over through, do you know how OPWC works or the?
Of course.
Okay, do you know about the board at East Gate that determines this?
Yes.
Okay, so what's going on with Trumbull County with it?
Answer my question.
No, no, I didn't.
Answer my question about the funding sources, then I'll answer yours.
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm serious. You want to talk about Crane Drive? Let's talk about it. Where's the other funding gonna come from?
It's not gonna come from East Gate anymore because we keep on screwing up because they're, they're dropping. Um, Scott, do you want to give us an update on East Gate's meeting?
That's not true. That's not true.
Keep Scott out.
That's not true.
It's not, it is true. Do we want to talk about the meeting at East Gate?
No, we don't right now.
I think we should. I think we should because that is going to.
Don't you're deflecting. You're gaslighting, you're.
It's really, it's related to the funding. It's related to the funding and it could put all of our projects in jeopardy over at, uh, at sanitary. They, the, it's possible that they could bump them and have other projects move up as a result of sitting on money.
It's always possible that. It's, there's always a possibility of that.
So is, is that seriously what's going on? Was that a discussion on, at the meeting at East Gate?
We, Scott doesn't need to answer. We're not bringing Scott in this. We're still waiting for your answer to Commissioner Cantalinas.
What's the other funding gonna come from?
Answer, then he'll answer, then we go to Scott if you're gonna do that.
Money coming from.
Where, where is it coming from? To finish this project, unless you want to send all the money back that we already secured.
All of it is going to be coming from what, ARPA or something now? Is that what you're proposing? Because you, we're not.
You don't even know. ARPA or something? That's your answer?
That's what, that's what you, that's what you guys, we've had people come in, elected officials and the townships.
It's coming from ARPA or something.
And ask us, what else can you do if this falls through with the funding? And that, that is exactly what, um, they're, they're proposing because things aren't moving quickly as they.
If you'd come to the, to the workshops, you would understand and hear some of the real issues. Not these Mickey Mouse issues about, well, I didn't receive this copy and I can't open my email.
I, I, when's the last time you put together a grant application or a, a project that included?
I just put together the RSQ that we're gonna be voting on. Where were you?
When's the, again, when's the last, have you?
I'm not, I'm not gonna do this. I'm not gonna do this.
For, for reference.
You were an intern at the planning commission and that's fine, but let's move on.
Um, for reference, I worked at, really, really, that's, that's all.
That's, we gotta move on. We gotta.
Together a planner, you know, we were in, let, let's just do this. We were in, because Mara's going there, we were in depositions. He was, where he, uh, where they illegally arrested me and they asked him uh, what his experience was in order to be the commissioner. He actually said he was a, he was a precinct committee person and it's laughable.
What were you?
Get those depositions.
What were you?
Those depositions are really cute.
What were you, Commissioner? You couldn't even hold down a job.
She was a Realtor that made zero income her last year in realty.
Please.
Okay, so.
Let's move on.
Okay, I was, I, I have a master's in public administration. I worked at, I used to put together.
Ask people at the planning commission what you did. They'll tell you in private.
I worked at the planning for CT consultants and put together plans and did review those things with George Sockle.
I'm taking the vote for item twenty two. I'm taking the vote for item number twenty two.
You know how to give away guns.
Cantalinas.
Yes.
I know you know how to give away guns and such to your campaign manager and you know how to sit and insult people. No, we're, you do not talk while I'm talking, Lisa. So I will explain, you want to, you were the Democrat Central Committee person. You were a, a precinct committee person and you said in a deposition that that's your experience. That's your experience. Yes, you did.
I did not say that.
If anyone wants the deposition transcripts, I have them. Uh, maybe Tony Bernard, Tony Bern- Tony Bernard or someone. Did you, if you'd like them, I'd be happy to share them with you. Actually, someone should put them online. Paul Monroe's, his work exceptionally good when he was deposed. Yes, it is. If you got, you are, you changed the topic all the time, gaslight, deflect, all these things.
Drive.
Right. And so you also said that I had no experience. So if we're, yes, you did. You should, you should.
After you attacked me, I said.
No, no, that's, that's what happened here. You can't, you don't get to re-read history and my history is getting millions of dollars in grants for communities in, in Trumbull County.
Where? Who?
Who?
Who, what grants did you get for Trumbull County again?
What millions of dollars did you all entertain?
Which ones have you written?
Since I've been commissioner. So, yeah, you're qualifying with it. So we're talking about experience in the real world, not just being a Democrat precinct committee person, but I actually worked for a consulting company that does work for Trumbull County. And I.
Yeah, ask that consulting company how it went.
Okay, so again, the, the projects that I worked on were in Niles and in Gerard and in nine different communities.
I'm proud of you. Let's move on.
You just got done saying that I, that I don't, I've never done that. I actually did.
I'm waiting for you to do some work here as a commissioner, at least come to meetings.
I used to put the plans and the drawings together in the application packets for those projects that were bringing millions of dollars into our community. So I actually have real experience, not just political patronage, pat on the head, we pull you up kind of stuff. So.
You didn't have that with Frank Fuda?
No, I've, I've never gotten a job or a promotion or anything based on who I know or anything like that.
For lack of trying, you tried to apply for every job under the sun in the county and you didn't get hired.
Why is that?
I don't know.
Well, if, if someone had a graduate degree and two licensures and, uh, why wouldn't they be able?
Because of behavior like this. I don't know.
Maybe it was a character reference you didn't pass.
This one, that's probably.
Okay, let's move on.
Item twenty two, Ms. Frenchco, your vote.
Which item?
Twenty two Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, the detailed drawings.
Yes. And I'm grateful that I received a copy of them and I think that the other commissioners should make sure that they see things they vote on too.
Item twenty three is to award the lowest and best bid response to SET, Inc. And enter into a contract for the Elm Road Water Improvements Project known as County Project Number two dash W dash sixteen for the bid amount of two million, two hundred, fifty seven thousand, four hundred, thirty dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantalinas.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, I, I have to abstain on this because there is nothing that, um, it was, it was really hard to go through all, all of these things with, um.
With an MBA, it was too hard to go through.
With multiple attachments and trying to match them up and, and fully, you know, any person of, um, most people would imagine that we have staff that will help us, but in Trumbull County, if your um, staff is allowed to be nasty to and refuse to work for certain people. So, um, I, I didn't get copies of these. Hopefully, moving forward, the department heads and the departments would be uh, a little more, uh, kind and courteous and provide the attachments, um, so that they, I, I can actually go through them.
Are provided.
He, you don't get to speak during meetings out of turn. You're, the clerk, please learn your place.
If you're attacking me for my work ethic, I'm going to be speaking.
How did you get your job?
Item number twenty four.
Just, if that's what we're doing.
I'm not up here on.
If that's what we're doing, if that's what we're doing, I just want it to be known that.
Be ready for item twenty four.
Please make a public records request for Lisa Blair's personnel file at the sanitary, at the highway engineers office.
And then Luca pointed you to the board you were on and then you use that to give blah, blah, blah.
And, and, um, and I do want to make it known that her, um, that Matt Blair was asking, called and.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
She's employee of the county.
Right now.
There isn't an, an estimation where she was found to be.
Twenty four is to award the lowest and best bid response to United Earthworks LLC and enter into a contract for Contract A for the State Road Water Regionalization Project known as County Project Number two dash W dash twenty three for the bid amount of two million, eight hundred, sixty five thousand, seven hundred, seventy five dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Yeah, I do want to have a little bit of discussion about a lot of these, um, projects and the funding. And I think it's important for, that we have someone from the sanitary engineer department discuss them. Because I don't think that the commissioners have ever listened in on or attended, uh, any of those, um, meetings that, uh, at East Gate that Ed Davis manages. There's a panel, I don't know if you guys understand the process for that.
The meeting was today, actually.
That's the, really?
The annual, the annual meeting was today, did you go?
You kidding me? This is, this just, I, this just shows how much they don't know. It's the, it's the one that relates to the, um, the projects that are being.
Right, I'm just saying that the annual meeting was today at East Gate.
That's not it. That, that was Tuesday.
It's today, Commissioner.
No, you haven't, no idea. So, um, there is a meeting Tuesday, um, and there's been a ongoing problem with Trumbull County and our sanitary engineer department not moving quickly enough on, um, our, our plans and, um, funding. And if they're awarded funding, they have to spend it. And they, it's been ongoing. Like I've listened in on meetings over the last years and they always bring it up. And, um, and now it's to the point where we might, our sanitary projects might get passed over or we might not get the funding that was already given to the county because they're not moving forward on them. And I, I'm just telling you, I've said before that this is a problem and I'm re- reiterating it again so that there's no surprise if this happens. And I know that you guys aren't aware of that, but I think it's problematic and we need to, um.
I really don't want to, I wish, I really don't want to put him on this.
You know, can't, nonsense. Can't have all that.
I don't want to give oxygen to this nonsense.
I know, but it's, it has to be cleared up.
It, it, it's actually true and I feel bad.
It's not true. There's a potential that, there's always a potential of that.
First of all, we're on item twenty-four, correct?
Yeah, but we're talking about.
There is no OPWC funding involved in twenty-four or twenty-five.
Okay, so I'm, I'm talking about generally.
So we were talking about agenda item and you weren't even talking about the agenda item. You were on a tangent.
The, the funding, yes.
But the funding isn't OPWC.
Look, you guys know what I was just talking about and it was what happened at the meeting and what.
Nobody knows what you're talking about. You and your imaginary whatever know what you were talking about.
Elm Road was an OPWC funded project. It did set idols. As I explained to Commissioner Cantal Mesa, as I commended the board yesterday for awarding the ARP funds of that project, because that project sat dormant for so long because the entire west side of the road cannot be assessed, which made the cost very unaffordable. Once the ARP funds were awarded to sanitary engineers, they made affordable. We've gotten it to public hearing last August. It's, we are ready to award the bid today and move forward. So that's the reason the project sat as it did for a period of time.
But I'm asking then further about how that's could possibly affect.
We've been notified and, but everything right now is.
Notified, please, for the public.
It's been discussed and we understand through letters, but there's no projects, there's no projects right now.
What's been explained through letters? That we're not going to be able to move forward. Please be clear. I know.
Well, the Elm Road projects, as an example, didn't, you know, move forward in a timely manner.
Right.
And you know, our funding is different. We have, we rely, we rely on multiple funding sources. And it's a timing issue. And sometimes the funding don't come together exactly as planned. And it delays things. It's not purposely done.
And then we lose money.
We need, we need to make the projects affordable for the public because they pay for it.
And we go after multiple sources of revenue or multiple sources of money.
Multiple funding sources involved.
Is the, the county cannot afford to continue to lose funding because the projects are waiting too long. They are upset.
Funding have we lost?
This, right now, he just explained it.
No, we lost any funding. No, no funding's been pulled from us.
The money we're losing, we're, we're losing the ability.
There's no money been lost.
No OPWC money's been pulled from us.
We're, but you don't get, we're not getting.
I know you're really sad about that.
No.
Yeah, cheering that on. I don't.
Money. I know you're really rooting for everyone to fail, but.
They, they make those decisions based on how quickly you move on projects. And, and the point is, they might not select Trumbull County sanitary projects and might put them to another project, um, as a result of how slow we're losing. So that is in fact, losing money because if we were getting things done on time, then we would be receiving.
But other, other entities rely on one funding source. Our sanitary engineer has several funding sources.
That's not.
And when those things, yes, a lot of them do.
No, that's not true.
Yes. They either rely on local funding and another source of income.
That's not.
Like a highway engineer, yes. That is true. As we're with sanitary, we have like four different funds. When those come in late, yeah, that's a problem.
No, that's, that's kind of correct. I don't think you understand that. Again, I don't think you've ever put a project together for grants or planning or.
Is that right? Is that?
Multiple funding sources?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
As we're other entities, a single stream or two streams.
We have WPCLF.
Right, but he's saying that other.
ARC.
Saying that, uh, he doesn't understand that the other entities also have multiple funding sources. They're not just using that funding source.
Not as many as the sanitary engineers using.
You have no, again.
Commissioner, this is Gary Newbrow. Am I able to speak?
Yes.
Yes, Gary.
All right, uh, as far as the District Six Public Works Integrating Committee down at East Gate, I have been sitting on that committee since two thousand and four. I have been successfully getting us a grant just about every year. Uh, right now, we are backed up on, we have all our projects on schedule except for Elm Road. In two thousand and eighteen, Randy Smith, as a sanitary engineer, pushed that we put that project on. Even though I informed him, we don't have the other funding sources secured and there may be a delay. Now, I was stuck on that project and having that seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant and getting it designed and I didn't have the rest of the funding. I was in a position where I was going to have to send that money back and reapply for it for a different project. But that's when the ARP came out and that's when we got the one point three million of that to make the project feasible. Other than that, well, the Elm Road project, it's on the agenda today to, uh, make the bid award and we can move forward on it now. And this is our last delinquent project and we should be on, in good standing, uh, with OPWC and the Integrating Committee, uh, for the foreseeable future.
So we didn't lose anything yet, Gary?
No, he already explained.
We haven't lost anything.
Okay, I think that he already explained that the, the, the.
Randy Smith jumped the gun and when applied too early.
The money.
And we almost lost it.
That the money that would have come from them, they ended, that, that there was a, it was a delinquent project because they didn't have the funding and, uh.
We needed the ARP money.
Right, but you would have been able to get the money through the OPWC if things were moving forward.
Right, but I didn't have the ARP money back then.
Right, but what I'm saying is that's losing money. The fact that, yes, you, you have ARPA money.
There were, there were other projects. I put on Jacob's Road back in there a few years ago for seven hundred fifty thousand. That project didn't come to pass. So the next year I went for one and a half million for, uh, Meadowbrook. So, so that we didn't lose any money, it just got moved to a different project. We've never lost a dime.
Thank you, Gary.
And we've been one, we've been prior to the most successful government entity down there at, at four OPWC between the two counties.
Thank you.
It would have been nice if we didn't have to use all the, uh, that volume of ARPA money if we would have had the OPWC, but they.
We, we didn't have the OPWC and it wasn't enough. Commissioner, that project only, is only accessible on one side of the road. That was then, that was almost, that, there, there was no other funding for it. I tried to get principal forgiveness, they, they didn't give it to me. The, the, we were going to have to send that seven hundred fifty thousand back, of which I would have moved into another project.
Why didn't they give?
The ARP came, but the ARP came along and we were able to save the project and it's behind schedule, but it, uh, the award for the, the bid is on there today.
So why didn't we get the principal forgiveness? They only give so many of them.
Qualify, it wasn't strong enough.
Right.
What does that have to do with it?
Saying.
You, you've got a person here who knows how to do these grant applications and who gets number one projects in the state on multiple occasions. And I'm sorry, that one didn't make it.
But that one didn't make it, but we did get the Yankee Lake project.
We've had multiple projects.
Other sewer projects, the blueprint of prosperity, we got the largest principal forgiveness award in the history of this state. That, that, and, and state road, uh, regionalization, that one plays, that, that, well, the blueprint scored number one in the state and that state road re- regionalization just scored third in the state and we got two and a half million of principal forgiveness for that. If Elm Road, uh, I tried to get principal forgiveness for that one, but it didn't make it. It didn't have enough point. And nobody's fault, uh, on, on this end.
They do, they do consider the execution of the plans and not just the, not just the plans. When you're putting the packages together and the funding proposals, they look at how long things are setting and if the money's being set.
Commissioner, if you remember.
No, they're looking for readiness to proceed. You don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
My call ended.
Thank you, Gary. Great job.
Great job, Gary. Keep up the good work.
So for item twenty-four, um, bid awarded to United Earthworks LLC, uh, Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, for the same reason, I'm abstaining.
What reason was that?
She was wrong. That's what the reason is.
Um, because they were, um, dozens and pages and, and, uh, um, I didn't have ample time to review them and was waiting for, for, and was waiting for.
Item twenty-five to, who awards.
Whoa! Stop interrupting me.
Stop rambling on. Get to your point quicker, Commissioner. Get to your point quicker. Please get to your point quicker.
Uh, I'm sorry. Do you want to call the roll again, please? Because I was, um, explaining the reason.
You abstained.
And I was, I was making an effort to, for the record, explain the reason and I was rudely interrupted by you and Argo.
We got two.
But when you do, when you do abstain, you should say why you abstained.
That's right.
Okay.
That's all.
It's, okay. Yeah, and I tried to answer that and you were both talking over me rudely.
Same reason.
And then I tried to.
I didn't know what reason that was.
And, uh, and he wanted to.
Didn't make any sense.
Just stop.
That's what you said. Item twenty-five is to award the lowest and best bid response to Utility Contracting Inc. And enter into a contract for Contract B for the State Road Water Regionalization Project, known as County Project Number Two Dash W Dash Twenty-three for the bid amount of one million, twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
This is number, which number is?
Twenty-five.
So on yesterday's, it was number.
This is a comedy of error.
No, 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 wait.
If Jerry Springer was still alive, she'd be a star. She would be as top people, be the highest ratings in the history of TV.
Explain this. I, I actually go, let me, let me just explain this while you guys are mocking me and making fun of me. Um, I actually go through when I prepare for the meeting and I put notes on every item. And one of the reasons why, uh, the staff is refusing to give me a copy of this is to, is to, um, make it more difficult so that they could poke fun at me. I actually.
You can't figure out that the items got bumped one. When we moved the last one to number eight, everything else got bumped up one. Everything else is. How hard is that to explain?
So I'm, I'm still using this because my notes are on it.
Okay, so change the number, add one. Plus one on everything after number eight. Simple, done.
Wait, so you.
Okay, next item.
I, I don't have a vote for her for twenty-five.
Which number was it yesterday on the draft, Lisa?
Yes.
I don't have the draft in front of me.
Yes, it would be twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. And, and they're all, it's not, they're not even on the same pages.
Well, because you move the things, things are going to be shifted a page.
Item eight was large, so it moved everything.
Everything is, yeah, so things are moved by several pages. It's, okay. Twenty-four yesterday. Yes, this is the, this is the same. This one I have to abstain on as well. Um, I was hoping to have copies of them. There's a lot of.
Did you get your MBA from Kent or Y S U?
Uh.
Because whichever one you went for, please don't send your kids there.
So I, um, again, I was, what did you say again? We're, we're shouldn't people?
It's, you can look it up on YouTube. It's in the minutes.
Did you just say, I'm sorry?
For someone with an MBA, you should figure out how to add one or deduct one when you move things.
I thought you said something about not sending their, your kids to a certain college.
If, if that's the way your MBA is treated, if that's where you come out the knowledge you have after you get one, yeah, you don't have very much knowledge if you can't add one.
What was it that you said a moment ago related to not going to a uni, a local university?
I said, wherever you got your MBA, don't send your kids there if you want your kids to be able to add plus one. If it's representative of your degree that you have. That's what I said. For someone so smart, you, you can, I, I'm sure you should be able to figure out how to add one. This isn't rocket science. This isn't sanitary engineer stuff. It's not civil engineering. It's math.
It's addition.
Basic math, addition. Not even calculus.
Okay, so, so, so you don't think people should, it's kind of their children to?
I'm saying you're not a representative of the MBA paper you got hanging on the wall. If you're going to sit here and go through these things and you can't understand them.
Wait, I don't have an MBA. What do you?
Who cares?
Can I move on to item?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Whatever it is.
Whoever, or whatever it is, okay.
Item number twenty-six is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. William Cover for the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, pay range six, seventeen fifty-two per hour pursuant to the authorized job posting from April fourth to April twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Nicholas Burnett from the position of laborer, pay range three, fourteen eighty-three per hour to the position of water operator, pay range eight with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Thursday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four pursuant to the authorized job posting of twen, April twenty-fifth to May third, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Sir Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Uh, yes.
Item twenty-eight is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Carlos Memental for the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, pay range six, seventeen fifty-two per hour pursuant to the authorized job posting from April fourth through April twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
I was just going to say thank you for bringing copies of those. I, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the months of March and April, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Wait, no, that's not it. Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item thirty is to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for statement of qualifications from interested parties for the purpose of acquiring additional leased parking in downtown Warren, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Um, can?
Second that.
Would you just like to table this and do it correctly or better?
The prosecutor's been involved in every step of this process.
Um, is the prosecutor's office representative in here?
They're not.
Okay.
What would you like to change, Commissioner?
Uh, I just, uh, first I'd like to ask if the clerk can read the, read the notice because it's really comical.
Sure.
Okay, clerk, will you please read it?
You can read it.
Why don't you read it?
Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County, Ohio, seeking statements of qualifications from interested parties. For the purpose of acquiring additional lease parking in downtown Warren, Ohio. That's the, the notice we're submitting. You want me to go on with something different? Trumbull County Parking available for leasing downtown Warren. The scope is to provide lease parking within downtown Warren, Ohio area. Provide a minimum of ten parking spaces with standard parking dimensions. All parking locations submitted must be within a third. That's what I'm reading. Yeah, that's what I just read.
Oh, okay.
Of the Trumbull County Courthouse located in one sixty-one High Street Northwest, Warren, Ohio. All parties interested in filling requests must submit two copies. Proper qualifications noted later than three thirty P M on Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four. Suggests the format for submittals as follows. Description, location. Paragraph describing the physical address and location proposed lease location. Number of parking spaces, brief description as the number and size of the parking spaces submitted. Description of conditions, a brief description of existing pavement conditions. Evaluation of submittals, respective responders to this request evaluated by location will be fifty points. Number of spaces, twenty-five. Pavement surface conditions, twenty-five. The Trumbull County Board of Commissioners will evaluate and score all submittals to determine which submittal is best suited to address the downtown parking need. Attention is directed to all responding firms of Trumbull County adopted drug and alcohol policy. Uh, okay, is that good enough? Okay.
So who wrote it?
Me.
Who else? Because yesterday you said it was other people helped you.
What?
But who, who, who else wrote this? Who typed this?
Can I show you what?
This part you wrote?
Can I show you?
I'm just saying, uh, in the workshop yesterday, you said that.
And then this part was added on by Mike.
Right, I could tell. Some, someone did this page, okay, and the front is quite, quite laughable. Um, I'm just trying to understand. Look, I, I just want to explain to you that the prosecutor's office does not do anything administratively. They don't tell us, hey, that's, that's a bad idea. They tell you.
Okay, then you write it.
Yeah, why didn't you write it, Commissioner? We're gonna sit here and criticize it. You should have wrote it. We've been talking about this for a year.
I thought it sounded perfect. I don't know.
If it's, if it's, if it's okay with the.
This is a request for qualifications for parking spots.
It's a request for qualifications. It says within a third of Trumbull County Courthouse.
Third of the mile, third of a mile radius.
It actually, it actually doesn't say that. It doesn't even. It doesn't consider, it doesn't, it doesn't consider per, um, purchase.
No, we're not purchasing. We're not considering that.
Okay, it doesn't, it, it doesn't say anything about maintenance schedules.
Unless you'd like to purchase.
About maintenance schedules, about strips, about, I mean, proof, proof of ownership or anything. And there's no sample of any lease that cost isn't even considered. And it's being ranked based on the, it sounds like this might be being crafted for the purpose of making sure someone comes out with it, to be honest with you. Because it says that it's being ranked based on the, the number of spaces. How, how is?
In the proximity, if somebody, if someone puts a bid and they got two parking spaces, we're not going to award them a bunch of points for that.
Actually, if someone comes in and one of them has so many and another one has so many. Uh, you might be able to use both of them, so it shouldn't be ranked on the number of points. What it should be. And what's missing and completely absent is this, in this, is that cost isn't even considered. So you're.
That's gonna be considered. We score these, Commissioner. We score these. They're gonna supply us all that.
Right, and so you're, but you're not even a value, you're not even proposing to have these evaluated based on cost. So cost doesn't even matter. It sounds like you're.
It sure does. We're gonna submit a cost.
It's not, it's not, but it's not.
We're not gonna submit how much they want to do this for.
It says the evaluation of the submittal is based on the following, location, number of spaces and pavement conditions. It has nothing to do with cost. The, those are, those, that cost and price.
They are gonna provide us with the cost. You are gonna have an opportunity to score these as you see fit. That's fine.
Cost and price should matter, and in fact, it should be done based on, um, I'm sorry, what did you drop off?
What is it?
Yeah, I'll get to that. You will get it when we get to the public comment section. It's something that came from Teresa Anderson who resigned and I will read it during the next segment of the meeting.
Well, how did, why did she bring it in? Did you send her an email?
No, I did not. She's listened in the meeting and said she wanted me to have this.
Oh, okay. So, uh, at any rate, I think that these should be calculated based on costs for per parking, parking spot.
Park, for parking.
Yeah, if you're gonna look at the cost, first of all, it doesn't even include the cost. We should be looking at.
They are going to submit the cost. That is something they're gonna give you.
But it's not, it says that it's not evaluated based on that, and I think it should be considered co- cost per, per spot and then also.
Cost per spot.
Cost per space. If you're evaluating based on.
Some of them aren't gonna have cost per space. They're gonna say the entire thing. So then you're gonna limit who you're gonna get even more. This is as general as you can be with a, with a generous radius area.
They're actually giving points based on the number of spaces and you might have two places that have some, some.
Here's the thing, Commissioner, you, you write it the way you want and we'll go from there.
Decide to lease with two different places, well, that's what we decide. Can't lease more than one spot?
No, because if you've already, please let me, you've guys have gotten your asses in so much trouble before in the back, then the. With, uh, with vendors who are coming in because, um, they, once you put in writing in your specification and your, what you're putting out. For requests for proposals, qualifications, bids, whatever, what have you, once you put that out, you cannot change it. You cannot change it. Do you guys not remember what happened a couple of months ago?
Yeah, and that's why.
Right.
Here's the thing, it's the commissioner's decision. It's the board's decision to do whatever the board pleases.
No, you can't just say we're, we're basing your, we're basing our decision on these three things.
No, and you base your decision on whatever you want to base it on.
Call the state auditor and let's move on.
Let's move on.
Yes, that's the way to go.
Now, for item number thirty, Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
You do understand that once you do that, this.
Yes.
You guys do understand that once you put out there that these are the only things that you're considering for the award, that is the only thing that you can consider. You won't be able to backpedal and say, well, hey, we decided to go with this and this person or whatever.
Easy to play armchair quarterback. Why don't you put something together then? You're sitting here critiquing every little thing, but you haven't done a thing of work. Not one thing.
Okay, Ms. French cow, you're right.
And no, it's ridiculous the way it's, it's written. Uh, did you have the? The kindergarten teacher help you do it that usually comes in your fan club? Like seriously, this is that bad? You couldn't.
My hand club?
The retired teacher that sometimes comes in and.
What?
Cheers for you. It's just really sad. I just think that we, we should do better.
Then do better.
Then do better.
Better. You have every.
You're sitting here doing nothing.
You're equal with us.
I'm, I'm not treated as one. It would be nice. So I, I already said that my suggestion, what my suggestion was. And you both said that it doesn't matter what I suggest because.
We, we just voted to authorize us to advertise. You wanna tweak it before the advertisement goes out? Tweak it.
Do you understand that you're voting on it as it is right now? You can't change it once you vote on it as it is. So we're voting on.
Sure can. You can amend it.
Okay.
You guys are just dumb. I feel so bad for Trumbull County. Item thirty-one is to approve an agreement. Between the Trumbull County Commissioners and the Office of the Ohio Public Defender Estate Agency. For the purpose of continuing to provide Trumbull County with a branch of the Ohio Public Defender's Office. For provision of indigent defense services. Agreement is for the period commencing July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Trumbull County agrees to pay the Office of the Public Defender compensation in the sum of seven hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars. To be paid in four local installments of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars due July first. October first of twenty twenty-four and January fifth and April first of twenty twenty-five.
This is, um, something that I would like to table as well because I, um. At first, I want to say it was put on the agenda by the agency and there's a pickup in our system administratively. Um, working with people who don't understand that the Board of Commissioners is our agenda and we need to put things on, but the clerk just puts things on for whoever. Um, sends things in. No one had, uh. The commissioner should be approving what goes on the agenda and it shouldn't just be placed in front of us. And we do need to have, I would like to have additional information about this because I ha- I had asked extra questions. And, um. I think that we need to have a little bit more time to digest it as opposed to just rubber stamping as the. Others do on the minor things and on eight hundred thousand dollar items. So I would, I would prefer an opportunity to review these things and get additional information, but. Uh, again, I do things differently.
Well, they're here today to answer any question.
No, I don't think that they have all the things that I, 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 I mean, I can't just answer something on the spot and I know I asked for the historic data. What we receive doesn't include a history since you've taken the office. With the breakdown of the cost and the increase of employees and the changes and those type of fluctuations as well. And I think it's, it's most important rather than just looking at what you have in front of you and comparing it to national state industry standards. That we look historically at what's happened in Trumbull County since.
No.
Cost wise, since.
Here's the, here's the problem that.
And this agreement doesn't take effect until, uh, I think it, it would be. July, which gives us time to actually look at things and not. Seriously, if, if you're, if. If something's coming over to the commissioner's office, the commissioners need to put it on the agenda. So it should be coming to the commissioners to place on the agenda, not just to the, the clerk. Whenever you need it to be done the next week without having us give the, having us have the occasion to find extra info out.
Man, you're done?
Part of the.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, with, there is, my name is Chase Carr. I'm the Assistant Director of Trial Services with the Ohio Public Defender's Office. With the contract, yes, it does expire at the end of June, uh, with an effective date of July one. However, this is a contract that involves. Several dozen contractors. Um, to do that as a state agency, we have to go through O B M. Um, that is something that takes significant amount of time to get approvals. That is the reason there was the transfer. From twelve month contracts to six month contracts because of the lack of time we had with the late approval last year. This is something we're trying to avoid so that we can be good stewards and instead of having to present multiple times through O B M. Doing it in one event, that way we can have the contractors and everyone ready to go. On the effective date where there may be a situation, if it is pushed back. We may have to go to O B M multiple times. We also may have to go to contractors multiple times because as people begin to plan that year. If they're not receiving that contract, they may not accept it. So we may have to track someone else then.
And here's the thing, if we go with any other, if you want to go with appointed council commissioner, which you criticized. Can I please finish? I let you speak. I let you speak.
I've never, ever, ever, do you know this, Laura? Have I ever said that I wanted to do with a point?
I'm saying you did.
Right.
Can I finish my point, please?
Yes. But don't lie. You're so accustomed to it. Please just.
I said that you didn't want to go with appointed council. Is that correct? That's correct. And I agree with you. We went with it for a brief time in the county. It was expensive. It was cumbersome.
How much was it at that time?
I'd have to get the numbers. I don't remember.
And that's, and because.
Can I finish my point though?
Would you remember how much it was?
Not offhand, I don't.
So don't, don't you think it would be good for us to have a week to go through and look at what it was costing the year I got here when you were spending that?
You can't compare this year to last that, that other year. You can't.
We can.
It's on apples to apple.
We can historically.
Can I please finish though? So we have two options here. We have appointed council and we have a county agency if you want to do that. And that, both of those take an inordinate amount of time.
Agency.
It's a county agency that we'd have to create with the commission.
It's not, but it's not an agency.
It would be a county agency.
It's a board style.
It's a commission, okay, that we would create, that we would have to incur the cost of legacy costs of all those employees. We would have to house them. We would have to have I T for them.
No one's talking about that.
If you're not willing to approve this, those are the options. There's no other options.
Yes, there are. There is an option of saying, yes, we want to continue our contract, but we don't want to pay that much and we want to see.
They're not gonna agree to that.
What we're going to fund. Actually, I think that they might and, and we need to look at that information. Historically, since they've got the contract from twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two it might have been or twenty twenty-one, I can't remember. Um, but was it twenty-two?
But Commissioner, Laura Brzezinski, Director of Trumbull County Public Defender's Office, um, respectfully, Commissioner, we have had a branch office in Trumbull County for forty years now.
No, I'm talking about doing our, yeah.
But, um, and we have contracted with the state, uh, for that entire period of time. Um, certainly, we're happy to provide any historic information to the board. However, the information we would provide is the same thing that we provide every year with our contract. That is a draft, uh, the contract itself as well as a budget spreadsheet, uh, which we do provide and, um, the board should have. Um, certainly I have put in that request that you had made to our policy and outreach. I don't have that back as of today, but that is information. The information I would get from policy and outreach from our state office is the same information that has already been provided to the board each and every year that we've requested a contract.
Every, every year, we, I think that we need to be looking at. Staff levels when you, we started doing business with you and, uh, staff levels now and the changes over. The years. It, it should not just be, this is this year compared to last year. Because once we see what you're doing and then we see what it's costing us, I think that it helps us to make a better decision and, and, um. We're not, we're not seeing anything except for what your, what your proposal is currently. Now, you've been doing it this long enough now that you could put together. You know, this is what your costs have been. This is what our staffing fluctuations have been. We don't have anything like that. I only see the stuff from current. Your current, um, budget proposal and comparisons to the larger, you know, industry standards, which obviously you're going to be advocating. To get as much as you can and to, that's what you're supposed to do. But I don't think my board recognizes our role as commissioners and the budget executives is to say, okay, how can we pare this down? And that's the problem is that they, they perceive it as, oh, we just, this is it. What they present us is what we need to do and I, I view it. How it is, and that is to say, let's look at, let's look at what's been spent. Let's look at the staffing. What, what can we do with that? Let's look at our costs and how they changed over the year with the reimbursement percentages changing. And what we were paying before we started working with you. And again, Mauro can't even remember what that was back when he had. I wasn't a commissioner then.
Yes, you are.
Okay, alright, I had just, okay, I just started you. It was your program that you were doing and, um, whatever. So.
My program I was doing, you were a commissioner.
You, okay, you were doing it for years that way and we switched to having the state public defenders. Once I got here. So, uh, again, I would like to see internally what it was costing us before and what.
You have all that information.
What is costing us internally, um, from maybe. Twenty twenty or twenty 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 to, um. Current.
Again, you have all that information.
I don't. I'd like to see what it is internally, twenty twenty to current. And what the reimbursement percentages were and then what our costs were with your agency. I mean.
And Commissioner, if I may, I can address the, the historical data is also going to give you an artifact that's going to kind of skew the numbers.
Right.
This is the fourth highest reimbursement rate we have ever had, even at seventy-eight percent. Historically, it's been as low as the thirty percents early in on the program. We've also had reimbursement rates as high as a hundred percent. We, however, though we set it, we have very little control over it. We are given the money in the biannual state budget. We are basically a pass through if they.
What's the percentage now?
Seventy-eight percent.
Okay.
With.
What was it? Do you guys remember what it was last year and the last three years, eighty-five? And then what, do you remember?
In the prior year, it was slated to be.
Like ninety-something.
Yeah, slated to be a hundred and as it was adjusted down, I believe it ended at ninety-five.
Yes. And then before that, do you remember?
Oh, it was in the forties.
Yeah, it's, it's varied widely over years before that. But unfortunately, though we set that rate, that is controlled by spending of entities that we have no monetary control over.
Right, and so that's why I caution my board and that's what I try to caution the board and say, just because. It's getting reimbursed as a percentage now, doesn't mean that it's going to be reimbursed at that percentage down the road, so we need to be conservative with our spending.
And we.
In addition of.
And we did, we have employed statisticians to go through this. We went through this with a fine tooth comb because we know that in the last year, there had to be a re. And adjustment bill sent out. We want to avoid that. We want to be good stewards and good partners. We have went through that and we estimated that number absolutely as conservatively as we could. In fact, the statistics that we used, we had an R value, a confidence interval value over ninety percent, which is very, very hard to ascertain in stat. In any type of statistics, but that's where we're at. We believe that that is where the rate is going to be. We have not been informed of any large outlays of projects that are going to impact that, so we believe that that is going to be an accurate rate throughout the fiscal year.
I will note as well, we are not seeking to add any additional full-time staff. Uh, we are maintaining our current staffing levels.
Uh, yes, but if you have a vacancy, what's wrong with keeping the, keeping it? Uh, yes, but if you have a vacancy, what's wrong with keeping the, keeping it vacant? Or something, you know, like there are things that you can do to make it. More costly, yes, you might have to do, people might have to increase their workload, but I, I mean, I was here when you had much. Less people. That's why I'm going to look at it and compare because I know the, I know what, um. What you guys were doing with less and you were still getting the job done. That's all.
Their workload and their, um, how much is dictated to them goes by national standards, correct? And you're in line with those standards.
Yes, there was a report generated in the mid seventies called the NAC, the NAC standards. There was another report generated by the Rand Corporation in the last years. We are not asking for case staffing at that level because that would increase your office staffing by about a hundred and ten attorneys. Um, so that is the most current. That would be asking for over a hundred just attorneys to cover that, that type of caseload.
And of course, those agencies are put there in order to justify, um, budget increases and things like this. I mean.
Done as an independent body. This wasn't at the request of any.
No, that's why, but that's why the, these. These are referenced in order to increase the budget. That's why they're not, that's why when budgets are presented to us, they're not being presented to us in comparison to. You know, the year before, the year before, the year before, they're comparing it to the national standard to show that they're lower. So that we can at a cursory glance see that we're actually much higher than what we were a couple of years ago significantly. I mean, without looking at. At everything.
The bills and when the reimbursement rate was in the nineties were significantly less. I mean, the county was only covering single digit versus a twenty-two percent that we're requesting now.
I'm talking, yeah. But I'm saying that the, the increase in the staffing went up during that point. What, yes, there was.
We are not asking for any further.
But there was, and that's what I had a problem with it at that point in time.
Because at that time we added a court. So we're literally bringing in an entire new caseload. That, that was the request for an increase in staffing.
That's, that's not it. Were you there?
I was not, but I was involved in the planning of it.
I, that's not what was presented. I don't remember that being presented.
Previously, we were removed from the common police practice. The increase in staffing that you're referring to was when we went back into those courts. So when we are adding multiple cases and multiple courts.
From appointed counsel to you guys.
But they were, but the first year they still were able to.
But they added.
They added significantly after, I think it was the second year.
No, it was the, the first.
That first year.
To account for those courtrooms.
Okay. Again, like I think it's important to see the historical data. Next to each other. You know, but. Nobody gave us that. It would be nice to see it and it doesn't matter. Obviously it doesn't matter because they're just going to vote yes. They like spending money without asking questions, so.
I, I've asked questions and I, I'm very comfortable with the service that they provide.
Of course.
If you have an alternative, I'd like you to bring it up right now.
How about? How about, uh, require, how about asking them to sharpen the pencil and, and asking for. The historic data and reviewing things and trying to save money.
Have all the historic data that's been given to you.
Yeah, so they're proposing this and we're just supposed to say yes.
I'm not saying that.
All be quiet. You guys vote, say yes, without asking to revise it. No, it is true. You're going to vote yes on exactly what they want. Thank you.
We have to provide a service. And this agency has done a fine job in Trumbull County. And you want to nickel and dime them for no reason and they haven't even added any staff. If you want to go with appointed counsel, if you want to go with a. County agency, then just say that.
Oh, that's not what I said. I just.
Well, there's no other alternatives.
Uh, there is an alternative of, of.
Sharpening your pencil and then guess what? They're not going to be able to provide the cases that they need to provide and we're going to have to go out and pay for that.
No, that's not true.
Okay. The national standards lie. You're right.
We haven't talked with someone from CCA about it because I went over all of it like a year or so ago. With, um, the director, they're not the director, the assistant director and, um, and it, it did look like we needed to. Not be so eager to give exactly what you guys gave, but I was outnumbered then and I'll be outnumbered again today, so. Go ahead, give them exactly what you want.
It's not exactly what they want. It's based on caseload and facts.
Okay, call the question.
For item thirty-one, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Uh, I, I have to abstain because I don't have, uh, historic information and.
Actually you do.
Uh, no, I.
Been provided. Years past, you have it. Don't say you don't have it. They've sent it every year, the years you want from twenty twenty to now, you have all those.
Okay, so you, so can we, can, okay, so can we have staff look that up? I'll do a public records request of it since, since I have, since our office has everything. And since they don't want to give it to us with their proposal, I mean, you would if you would have, yeah. Um, I'm just going to ask. Oh, no, I'll, I'll do a records request from the county just to, so that I can have my eyes on it even though. So, um, yeah, again, so the reason I'm abstaining is because this is their initial budget proposal. Um, and it doesn't include historic numbers to show, um, the county. And we don't have the county's costs historic or the. Staffing, any data or their cost historic. It's just this year compared to, um. National averages instead of what we've been spending. And I think it's important that we do a.
We know what we've been spending.
And a budget process, you go back and forth. Everyone knows that or should know that, that budget process, you go back and forth. You don't just say automatically, yes, yes. Okay, here, we'll give you everything. But since my board wants to do that, they can do that. I'm abstaining because I haven't had the opportunity to go back and forth or to even, um, review the historic data. Compared, um. And, and that is normally what the budget requister does. And so, since we don't have it, then I'm, I'm staying.
Okay, motion passes number thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two is to execute a, a letter of support to the city of Gerard for their application to the Appalachian Regional Commission. Funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The city of Gerard is planning to replace and upgrade their raw wastewater pump station. The total project cost is three hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. The city of Gerard will be required to pay thirty percent of the total project cost, one hundred two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Improving the pump station will ensure that residents have access to reliable infrastructure and equipment in order to successfully. Live and work in the city of Gerard and authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to execute said letter on behalf of the board.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French cow.
Yes.
Alright, that concludes our regular agenda items. Um, for today, May fifteenth. Do we have anything? For the good of Trumbull County? Would you like to speak?
Yes.
My name is Shelley Jackson. And I have another public service announcement. This is about leadership. Because I know for a fact that students are watching. Our Trumbull County Commissioners. And they're watching the community when they come up to give their public service announcement. And I'm speaking about leadership today because I want them to know that leadership is not. Creating chaos. Or opposition. Or disorganization. There's three more words I want to use about leadership. And this is based on our community, our workplace and our homes. It is not to be a hostile environment. We have two Trumbull County Sheriff's deputies here, do we not? They sometimes have to work in a hostile environment because they're working with criminals. I say that because I worked with juvenile and adult felons. And some of them can be quite dangerous. But in this boardroom, it should not be dangerous. There's a difference. There's a separation. The other word is toxic. There's an article on AOL. Regarding the Stark County Soil and Water Distribution or Conservation District. The article starts out about a toxic work environment. And it talks about eight employees resigning in one day. I don't think right now in Trumbull County. And in the cities that we prospectively live in can afford for employees to resign. They're not coming, are they? And when they come, they don't stay. The other word. Is lethal. Environment. That's worse than hostile and toxic. Because the lethal means that your employees are sick. They're taking medication. In order to make it through the day. Now, quickly. This is what leadership is. And I'm speaking about this because I've been a union president, vice president, secretary. There is no way that I would run a meeting like this. I couldn't. It's not in me. And union people are the toughest people to work with. Especially when it's contract time. Believe me, I know. So I commend those. Who are stealing their jobs and maintaining their self-esteem. With a thank you and I'm glad you came to work today. This is what leadership is. You must have compassion for the people you have authority over. Compassion. Not ridicule, not verbal abuse, but compassion. The second thing, you must have a vision to implement and complete. Because it's already written that when the people don't have a vision, the people perish. That's what's written. The third thing, you must be able to resolve conflict. With righteous solutions. It's not easy sometimes, is it? And that's to benefit the community and the employees. The last, the fourth thing is this. You must not make complaints nor degrade anyone you have authority over. That's not your job. Your job is to serve. And I said, this is the second time I've said about serving the people. The last thing is this. This is what I taught my Sunday school children. Keep in mind, I had them from the age of five to the age of eleven and twelve. First Corinthians fifteen and thirty-three, be not deceived. Evil communication corrupts good manners. To let them know that what they say will corrupt their good manners. I thank you all for this time that I spent with you, uh, and I hope this encourages you. For what in the positions that you are in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shavers?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Terry Shavers with Braceville Community Foundation. Want to give you a little update on how the museum's coming along. So, um, my contractors have gone to the building department to try and, you know, get permits for various phases of the work and. So it was recommended to them that we hire an architect. To do some of the design because it's turned into a commercial project. And so, um, you know, we are, that's the process we're in right now. We've hired a, uh, an architect. Uh, we've already did the primary approval on the drawings and so, uh, in a couple of weeks, we, I hope to start. Work again, okay?
We look forward to being there as well when you.
Yeah, so we. We might have to move the schedule back a little bit, so we may lose, uh, because it's going to be a couple more weeks before he's done with the drawing. So it's maybe late, uh, July, maybe, uh, maybe even August. Alright, so we're still in the process of collecting exhibits and, and that sort of thing. Now, we've been to a couple other museums, a couple other historic sites. And they don't have all the commercial things that we're being made to do, so I'm not really sure what that's all about, but just wanted to give you a little update.
Appreciate that.
Alright.
What do you mean, um, you're required to do different things?
Well, you know, the Barnheiser, for, for instance, the Barnheiser and Gerard, um, they don't have a ramp. We, we have to have a ramp. We have to have an ADA bathroom, so we're having to change our house because it's, you know, of all these requirements and some of those other places, even the. Some of the historic homes in Bloomfield, they don't have any of these things and we're being required to make.
Due to being grandfathered in somehow on some of these.
I'm not really sure what the process is, but we are changing.
Who, who told you?
Built, well, my contractor said when he went to the building department, they recommended we get a architect so that we can make it like. Commercially compliant. So I don't believe the other buildings are commercially compliant.
I don't think that you need to make it commercially compliant. It's rec, it's recommended and unless it's a requirement associated with. Receiving the ARPA funds, I don't, I really don't. It, it sounds like it could be, it. It sounds like it could cost you guys a whole lot more money than you were planning.
It is cost.
That's what I'm concerned with about your, because we want, first. First of all, we awarded your funds is because we want you to have it and we want you to be able to spend it and get the work done. And, and to see the project complete, but if it's going to cost. That much, I mean, is Mike Slawinski available? I mean, recommendation doesn't necessarily mean. Requirement. I mean, some things are suggested, but not.
Yeah, they're saying that, you know, if, if we need the permitting that. We need the architectural drawings to be able to get the permitting. That's what they're saying to us.
Um, is, is Mike on, can we get Mike on the phone? I'm just concerned because I know that they have a lot of other historic, you're right, like I, I follow. These things and I go to our historical locations and I don't see all of the. Accessible. In fact, I, I mean, just. We did the, um, Upton House. We've done a lot of different, um. Awarded a lot of money to historic buildings with our ARPA funds because I think it's important. It makes us unique in Trumbull County. And I don't, I know that. I don't know of any of the other ones that are. ADA accessible and I'm worried that you might be in a situation where you're not able to. Move forward and I don't know if you're there yet, but I don't want that to happen.
Yeah, it's marginal, it's going to be marginal. I'm not sure at this point in time, I'm, I'm, you know, in contact with the contractor and. He's saying that it's going to be close, so. Saying, we're, we're trying to talk about what things we might be able to eliminate so that we can work other things in. And that's where we are right now.
But it's already a building.
It's already a building.
I know, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. It's not like it's a new construct. With the new construction, that would be a, a different story because the, um, the housing codes. The building codes would say that you, with the new construction, you have to do X, Y, and Z, but this is already existing, maybe because you drew a permit, it's triggering it. But I still don't know that that's necessarily. There really, if there's any bear, if there's a way to get a variance, does that make sense?
It does make sense, but, um, one of the things is when a building changes use.
Yeah, that's right, the use.
You've got to evaluate the new use. And that's.
It's going from a house to a museum, correct?
It's a historical site, but it's.
So has every other literal.
So it's not a commercial museum like per se, you know, uh, but that's what it's turning out to be.
I mean, they spent the money to move that house in Howland and there's so many other houses that have become historic sites and. I, I know that not all, again, I am promising you because I've been in them, they're not.
I've visited several, yes, that's correct.
Then we don't have Mr. Slawinski or anyone on the phone.
Being that we can get ahold of him.
No, we, we can look into it after the meeting, make a phone call over there and see if we get a better explanation why.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioners, Mike Slawinski.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so it sounds like there's a change of use in the building. A change of use would trigger building code compliance. And for a commercial building, the things the gentleman are speaking of would be, uh, would be required. ADA facilities, uh, current building code standards. I mean, simple things as simple as illuminated exits for life safety issues are required in commercial buildings.
So here's, here's the thing, um, Mike, if that's the case, then the other buildings that received funding and they drew a permit would have triggered a modification as well. So say you're doing a, a roof or you're spending, do you see them?
Yeah, but is that change of use?
What other building are we talking about?
It triggers it whenever you pull a permit. Say, say you, you pull a permit for uh, electrical, and then they come in and then they say, oh God, you're out of compliance for all of these other things. It, it triggered an inspection. And so that's why I'm wondering, you know, because you've got the other buildings that we've funded and they're not being required to, as a result of their permit pulling process to.
What other building are you referring to?
Upton.
Well, you know, Barnheiser, the Barnheiser House, um, there's a couple of homes in Bloomfield. Excuse me?
I'm not familiar with the Barnheiser House.
We can, we can go through.
It's a historical home in Gerard.
Of them. I think we've even done HVAC. It, it, the other.
John Stark House up by the, um, library.
Yeah, but I'm saying where we've actually spent, where we've actually spent money to make improvements there, it hasn't triggered, um, complete modifications to comply with ADA. And they've had to pull permits in order to do it properly. Is there any type of way?
So if you move a, if you move a building, an existing structure from residential to commercial, you will trigger ADA compliance. That is absolutely correct.
So my question is whenever they're already, when they're already existing, then, and you know, it, these buildings are already.
Give them a specific question and they'll answer it.
I, I know that when you go into a building and you do an inspection, then that triggers them looking at other, at, at other items that would need to be improved. And that hasn't happened in some of the other projects. That's why I'm asking, are, are you saying that maybe the other historical buildings are not commercial? Are you saying that they missed being triggered to make the modifications, Mike?
Well, what I would say is that we do not have code enforcement over the city of Gerard, so I do not know what the city of Gerard has done to enforce building code compliance. What I can tell you is that a change of activity within a building constitutes a change of use and a change in the application of the Ohio Building Code.
One of those little wrinkles in there.
So if you don't have jurisdiction in Gerard, you do have jurisdiction in Braceville?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Oh, Gerard's a city. Okay.
And it has its warrant, you know.
Okay.
Where they have their own building inspections. Yeah.
They have zoning. We, we have our own zoning department.
No, but not your own building department.
When did you, when did you change the zoning?
The zoning did not change.
The zoning hasn't changed, Mike?
Uh, building code compliance has nothing to do with zoning. Zoning is land use. Building code compliance is a completely separate county issue. Zoning is enforced at the local level. County Building Department enforces the Ohio Building Code through the unincorporated portions of Trumbull County.
I understand, but it's not commercial yet.
Doesn't matter how it's zoned.
I, I believe the gentleman said it was a museum open to the public.
No, not yet. I mean, I'm just saying, um, it, it, because it's not, it's not technically, it's not zoned that way right now. Um.
Zoning is land use.
I understand.
Zoning and building are two separate issues.
I believe it's residential. It's not, it's not commercial. So that's why I'm asking there, Mike.
Is it a one, two, or three family home?
I guess.
I mean, I.
It's one. It's a one fam- it's a one family home.
It's a one family home.
Now?
Currently, yes.
And when you, and when you get done, what is it going to be?
A one family home.
What?
It's open for the public.
Is there anyone living there?
No one will be living there, no.
It'll still be a one family.
So it does not meet the definition of residential?
It doesn't meet the definition of residential? Okay.
The building code laws are there to, and everything we do is there to protect safety too. Let's not forget about that, you know? I, I know it's, um.
This is, is what we're up against. That's what.
Unfortunately, and this is the state of Ohio's standards, not ours.
What about Howland Township? Oh yeah, they have their own? Mike?
No.
Mike?
They have their own zoning department. Howland Township falls under the County Building Department.
Right. So, um, whenever they moved a building, where, did you check in?
There was a permit for it? Yes. There was a permit for it. We worked with their contractor and their consultant, which was MS Consultants submitted plans to us to demonstrate, uh, you know, handicap parking stalls, uh, ADA entrance.
So they, they modified it?
Yes.
Uh, how about the Bloom, how about Bloomfield? Is that similar to Braceville?
I'm not familiar with Bloomfield, what they did in Bloomfield.
I think you're referring to Centover.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is still technically a private home owned by an individual. There's no nonprofit corporation or anything like that. They, he does events there, but, but he.
But he lives in.
He restored it as a, as a private.
But based on, I, I, but based on that position of, based on the position of Mike, is like if no one's living there, then is it commercial? Or is it, um, because he's talking about.
At least it's not a residence unless someone lives there.
I understand, but it's still only going to be a one family residential, um, unit. And if another, in another community that you have jurisdiction over, you're, you have a, a, a structure that was restored and renovated for the purpose, no one's living in it, but it's restored in order to ha- hold events. I'm just saying, Mike, like it doesn't seem consistent.
Well, so what we're going to do is, I, I, I'm not familiar with the one and, and, and then the other location that was referenced, I'm not familiar with. But in, in general, I can tell you that, that we're going to look at the primary use and occupancy of the building. So, so like we take example, my house, you know, if, 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 if people come over to my house and we have a party and we're serving alcohol, it's not a bar. It's still the primary use and occupancy of the building is residential. And from what I've heard so far by watching the meeting, is this is going to be a museum and it's going to be open to the public. When that, when that happens, there are certain safeguards that have to take place to make the building safe.
That hasn't happened yet. It's what I'm saying. Right now it's, it's.
They have to pull permits for when it does happen.
Yeah.
So, so, so what he's looking for is going to be a certificate of occupancy, which will define the use and occupancy of the building. And he, he would not receive that until he's gone through the application, plan approval, building inspection process. And then this department would issue a certificate of occupancy for the occupancy of the building and add its new use and occupancy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I wanted to get up here to address one thing for Mr. Shavers because I know that it's a concern with some of our sub-award recipients in that we had some timelines for people to spend money. And with the new FAQs that were issued by the federal government, we know that we don't have to, um, have the, we have to spend it. They don't by December 31st. And so, um, Attorney Rogers and I are working together to come up with, and we'll do an amendment and we'll amend all the agreements at once. And we're coming up with a, an appropriate deadline for them. And I also am working on a list for her. So we're, you guys will have a resolution upcoming to do that. I just wanted to make sure that he understood that and was assured by it. The other thing, since I'm up here, um, that I'd like to address is there was a resignation letter that was, since we're talking about resignation letters, there's a resignation letter that was referenced by Commissioner Malloy. And I think it would be appropriate to read that. Dear Mr. Malloy, I've been asked to let you know my reasons for leaving HR after nineteen years. The quick answer is Commissioner Frenchco. My first meeting with the commissioner was in the first days of her term. She went through my personnel file and let me know she was disappointed that I do not have a degree in HR. She was also uncomfortable with my, that my wife also works for the county since it looks like nepotism. It's only nepotism if you hire somebody legally. Nepotism, if you hire somebody to work in your office who's related to you. In other words, I can't hire my son. Although we begin, we both started in departments outside of the commissioners before eventually moving to our current positions. And I'll just, uh, people are going to, you have people, we have fifteen hundred employees. Some of them are going to find each other and like each other. That's, that's just the way it works. In February 2021, she accused our HR Director Rich Jan Jackson of sexual harassment within a month of taking office and convinced the board to suspend him for seventeen workdays. During that time, she ordered me to write up my fellow employees for transgressions as trivial as crying at their desk. I was unaware of having to get approval from two commissioners, so I did what I was told, which is, as it turned out, was contrary to our policy manual that all discipline has to come from a supervisory level employee. The disciplines were removed once Rich returned from suspension, but it was damaged, it damaged relations with my coworkers for quite a while. For months, one employee burst into tears every time I walked near her, thinking I was there to write her up. I watched for over a year as Rich and Commissioner Frenchco clashed over every issue and witnessed the atmosphere go toxic. Her constant berating has created a hostile work environment, destroying morale as she went after a staff that is dedicated to performing duties in the best interest of the taxpayers of Trumbull County. I feel lesser staff would have crumbled under the pressure of trying to do her bidding. After Rich retired, the commissioner stepped up her complaints against the staff, wanting me to discipline nearly everyone, which, as I stated above, has to be done by a supervisor and didn't have approval of a second commissioner. In her emails, she made references about me not doing what I was told. It made me very uncomfortable to work in that environment. There was an incident with Chuck Lightner on December sixth, twenty twenty-two, where she barged into a meeting I was having with him and wanted to see his notebook, which was sitting on his desk. He refused to do this because it was his personal property. She told him they were public records and she wanted to see them. Chuck walked away, at which time she took his personal property and started making copies. She asked me what we spoke about. I told her we were looking to fill an open job in our department. She said to put it on hold since Chuck wouldn't be here much longer and asked if I wanted to continue working after the first of the year. This I took as a threat that if I didn't do what she wanted me to do, I would be terminated. Then, of course, when he returned, she accused him of punching her, which was refuted by a witness and no charges were filed. The tipping point for me was New Year's Eve, twenty twenty-two. I received a call from the commissioner accusing me of withholding a complaint and disciplinary report from two thousand and five in Paula's file to protect myself since it involved me. The report was in my file, not Paula's, and it happened so long ago, I forgot about it. She then told me that no one in HR can be trusted. I stewed over the comment all holiday weekend and decided it was time to move on. I became aware, aware of a position in the auditor's office, spoke with Mr. Viviano, who offered me a position in accounts payable for a higher rate of pay. Ms. Frenchco, you're the definition of a bully.
I, um, do you know who, um, do you know who asked him to write that?
He referenced it.
He said he was asked to buy.
To let her know, him know her, his reasons, which if you.
No, who asked him to write it?
It's dear Mr. Malloy. I read that.
Because we talked about it during the meeting.
Asked to write it by Malloy. Okay.
Right, but asking someone to, for their reasons is not like plugging them to do it, to, 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 not, not making it up. It doesn't make any difference in the truth of these statements.
People that were here and lived it know the truth.
It's a very true statement. I believe, listen, Ms. Frenchco, if you told me the sky was blue, I would go outside and check.
Yeah, when I, when someone says sexually inappropriate things to a new commissioner, they should be disciplined and they should, and I, I was very happy that that happened. But, um, evidently, I learned the hard way is what, if you try to stop or change conduct, then things are, um.
Definition of sexual harassment has to do with power. He had no power over you. You were the one with power who abuses it.
That's right.
I have, I have no power being the minority on, on the board and for someone.
We discipline them because you urged us to discipline her.
It was.
And it turns out it was all a lie. And I apologize to Steve for that.
No, it wasn't a lie. No, okay. I mean.
I mean, you have your version. The rest of the office and the rest of the county has their version. So everybody can't be wrong and you're right.
This is the biggest bullying effort that I've ever, that I've ever seen.
The truth.
People really concertedly getting together in order to.
Getting together. This is somebody that's trying to state the facts after you ran them through the wringer.
I mean, this, this, I, I, my back was broken and the guy was taking pictures of me, making fun of me and putting.
The whole world just watched you forty-five minutes ago, bullying the clerk and berating her in front of the whole public, in front of all the coworkers and in front of all the people, the public.
But you talk about bullying going.
With their own eyes.
Realizes that I, that.
And you're saying, no, that's.
And you're talking about bullying at nine one one when you never even stepped in there.
Okay.
You've never even been in the building, unless it was for a photo op.
Oh. This is, this is, this is sad. I mean, that, that guy, I mean, I'm not going to go back.
And the governor had to have two extra security guards come in.
Because he wasn't comfortable with being there.
She made threats on Facebook that the governor felt is threatening.
And everybody in that, everybody in nine one one knew about it.
Okay.
And was with a gun on Facebook the night before. So the governor brought an additional highway patrol and Howland Police for that day. And we were all under instructions to keep you more than six feet away from the governor at the time, by his staff.
Uh, where, where, where is that? I'd like to make a records request to that because I was.
When you showed up, keep the commissioner six foot away from the governor. That was told to me by the highway patrol supervisor. And that's why when you came up for the photo op, everybody pushed you down and Major Villanueva stood in front of you and stood between you and the governor. Because the governor didn't trust it.
Look at the photo.
Look at the photos that are there. Call the highway patrol and ask them. Call Major Villanueva and ask them. Call the governor's chief of staff.
Okay, do, do a public records request anyway.
We were told that. We were told that.
Public record, okay. I'm sure it's in writing somewhere. If it's true.
Then do public records with the governor's office.
Who, who was it? Who told you that?
Uh, the chief of staff that the governor brought with him.
Okay. And you have communication with him?
Uh, verbally on the phone and on the phone and, and when I got there that day.
Verbally, okay.
You were not invited to the event and when you showed up, they, that's when the governor enacted Plan B, which was an additional highway patrolman in a Howland, call Howland Police Department and ask Howland Police Department why they sent a sergeant over there that day. They'll have communication there. They'll have some type of communication between the governor's office and Howland PD on why they sent one of their supervisors to that meeting at the nine one one center that day, in addition to the governor's staff.
In all of the governor's visits, there was never more security than I ever saw than that day because of one individual.
Don't look at your Facebook posts from the night before that.
Okay. I mean, I.
They referenced it. They referenced it to me. The Facebook post, the governor felt, the governor's staff felt was threatening.
That's interesting. Alls I can say is that's interesting because I was standing next to him last week at a, at an event. As the only person from the county there. And, um, there weren't, there was no one. There is no, there was, I don't even think there was any security there that day.
There's always security.
There's always security there.
Okay.
You just may not have seen it.
Thank God.
These are facts. This is, we're not making this up. This isn't something that I made up or Commissioner Frenchco or Commissioner Kimball made up.
I, I think you guys need to get the media involved because this, this would be a huge story. I think that you would love that to have me.
As much as you would love that commissioner, we're not going to do that.
You should, like, if this, all these things are so true. Yeah.
Let's move on.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, um, relates to our, um, uh, jail and some complaints that I've been receiving over in the jail. And, um, I want to state this publicly. And, um, I want to state this publicly because I'm, I'm disgusted. We had, uh, the, I had a complaint last week. I think that they might, I don't even know if it's being addressed. It's, there is someone who had a, uh, surgery, uh, gallbladder surgery, got sent back to the jail. Having problems with the incision and they just gave him Neosporin and some Band-Aids and is not getting, um, any type of care post-op and, uh, has been asking, I had to speak with family in order to try to get them to check on him. Uh, and then secondly, this one has been taken almost a week and I hope that they're going to, they're, they're, they're doing something. There is a man who is a paraplegic and, um, uh, and he was complaining about not being able to breathe. And they kept on ignoring him and the Dr. Malvece, I, it was reported to me that he was told he was malingering and just making that up. The guy out of frustration and truly inability to breathe with shortness of, of breath, uh, threw the leg of his wheelchair, the rest and broke glass because he was having that much difficulty breathing. Uh, as it turned out, he ultimately went to the hospital and, uh, his family reported that he had a bowel obstruction, perforation and was anemic. And that's what caused him not to have to have that sensation and not being able to breathe. He was in, he was kept there for several days. And then he was released back and they took his wheelchair from him. So he's been there. And, and Sheriff, if you're there, do something. This is, this is horrible. Um, the, the individual is, um, soiling himself. Um, the correction officers are supposed to be helping him to use the bathroom, but instead you put him in the hole so that no one can see him or hear him crying. It's horrible what you guys are doing. Please, please, please do better. There, the, the, the people who are in jail for, for, for the purpose of A, just being humane and B, preventing further liability to the county, can we please make sure the people are treated humanely?
Okay, Commissioner, while you're talking about the jail, why don't you vindicate me on your request you made at the jail when you said that I was there after hours? Um, then I got special perks by going in after hours to go visit an inmate at the jail, who I received a complaint from the guy's family that he's on a colostomy bag and breathing treatments five times a day. And you said that I went in there after hours and then you got a copy of the tape? You did a frame of information. Are you ready to say now that you apologize? You're sorry that for the comments you made on social media and in the public that I went there after hours against policy? Did you see that I was on an official tour with two of the high ranking guys in the sheriff's department, including the warden and an H R person that you accused someone else of being there?
Have no idea what you're, I, I'm talking about an inmate right now because it's being mistreated and you're talking about yourself.
You accused me of going in to visit someone in jail after hours and, and, and the privilege is only given to clergy and lawyers. And, and requesting the tape, you got a copy of the tape. So did Randy Smith.
You don't care about, um.
I'm just saying, I went in for the same reason and checked on him and went and checked the medical staff out and they were giving this guy good treatment. And I went into the medical unit myself.
So you're saying you went in during visiting hours?
Yes, I did.
And you're.
I get an official tour of the jail. When I was in there, I checked on an inmate and went to the medical unit to make sure he was getting the care that his family had called me about and he was getting the care.
So you.
So did you go in there and see if this guy's getting the care he needs? Or you're just accusing Dr. Malvece and the medical unit there of giving bad treatment without witnessing it for yourself?
I was not aware that we were allowed to go in, uh, outside of.
You go through every bill.
Was, it wasn't outside of hours. You can go request a tour today.
What room, were you, were you in there?
Pardon me?
Did you have your phone with you in there?
I did not. And the videotape proves that.
Okay.
Yep, you saw that.
I didn't, I didn't see anything. I don't know what you're talking.
You requested free information. Do you want your free information request?
I had no idea.
Requesting all the video footage?
Know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I don't have.
Cause now all of a sudden it was proven wrong and now you're backtracking from it. After you accused me being on the phone with the jail during outside of the hours and it's been proven wrong by the videotape, now all of a sudden your memory is lost.
Haven't seen anything that you're talking about.
If you want to check on an inmate, if you want to go in there and check on the jail conditions and look at the lighting and look at the floor, you can, you can call Lester, you can call.
The truth is, we shouldn't.
The major and get a tour, just like I did and like Martha did and like Todd Lattell did and like our human resources director did. Schedule an official tour of the jail. We own the building. They'll give you a tour. They'll show you the medical facilities and you could probably even see the inmate that's complaining about the medical condition to see for yourself that he's getting or not getting the treatment the family's telling you about. You have the right to do that, Commissioner.
He wasn't getting the treatment because he evidently had to, uh, they were, they were ignoring him to the point where it was a perforation. I, I mean, I, I know what happened. It's not the first time it's happened and they need to do better. Family members should not have to reach out to commissioners, uh, as a last resort for them to do their jobs and treat people humanely. The contract is over, I think it's over a million dollars at this point. It used to be, uh, under five hundred thousand. And, uh, now it's increased as a result of the, their citation with the state and all the complaints and the lawsuits. Uh, but we need, if, if they're, if they're making that much, they need to be providing that much or there needs to be some type of accountability in place with the, with the sheriff there to make sure that things are being done as opposed to just saying, hey, we're getting the money. Everything's.
No, you, you don't know that there, there is an accountability. There, there are, there are inmates that lie. There are inmates that are criminals that lie. They just had a case recently and it was proven where a guy said, he was called his family, said he had a stomach ache and they weren't doing anything for him. And they looked into it. The major looked into it. The guy had gonorrhea and didn't want his wife to know. And he, so he told his family they weren't doing anything for him. They were treating him. They were treating him exactly what he, for the ailment that he had, but he lied to the family and said they weren't treating him for a stomach ache.
Here's the thing, before we come out here on the floor and allege things that happen, when we don't know both sides of the story, let's try to do that before we, before we try to sensationalize someone in the jail or try to say something about somebody in H R. You're telling me off again.
I've seen, because I already know the other side. We were here. You conspired to have me arrested for reporting on it in the past and major, someone from the jail wrote a letter, uh, demanding an apology and contained in that letter was a dishonest statement where they manipulated what the inmate said and it was confirmed that it was manipulated when you listen to the audio of the recorded conversation and Nadine Grimley reported that. Those internal investigations are nothing more than an opportunity for their, for them to cover their behinds. I, I've seen that. That's what happened the last time and I, I'm concerned that that's what's going to happen and that could be happening in this case too. They need to do better. They're getting paid enough. They need to actually do it.
Allegedly.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. You're telling me things I don't know about. So if somebody's contacted you and you're speaking it like it's gospel. I don't know that.
You got an email as well.
No, we didn't.
Yes.
All three of us said that there was someone wanted to talk about an inmate thing in the jail.
Okay.
Oh, so you believe him, but when I say things are email, okay, you should check your emails.
That's fine.
You'd see these.
But even, even so, you have to ferret out what's, what's right and what's wrong.
Okay.
You can't just take somebody's word for every single thing and say, you know, what the department is.
Literally said that that's what you do to vote every day in the meeting is taking people's word for.
When did I say that?
I trust this.
When did I say that?
Earlier today.
You're saying that.
Go listen to the meeting.
You're the one who's doing it without saying people.
I trust them, so I'm just going to vote on it. Okay.
I never said that.
You did.
Oh my God. It's impossible.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
Yes, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Engineer Smith, how are you today?
Good.
Good. I apologize. We did have an East Gate meeting this morning, but I did have a few calls and I do want to echo with, uh, what Commissioner Kamal Mesa said. I think people do need to, you know, have their facts in order and do some fact checks before coming into a, you know, public meeting and making a suggestion or otherwise. But I guess Commissioner Malloy, just a point of clarification, at no point in time did I request a copy of any tape of you associated with the jail. So I'm not sure where you had heard that from, uh, but obviously that's not accurate for what it's worth.
Well, you did make a phone call to the major inquiring and then, uh.
Well, again, you're missing.
Information.
Let me correct that. The major called me, um, just a point of clarification there and we did have that conversation and really don't need to get into it, but no, I corrected you the last time. But yeah, that's correct. But at no time did I request a copy of the tape as you had suggested today, just for clarification sake. Uh, number two, was there a question on my involvement with Crane Drive?
Oh, it was, I'm sorry. It was just said that, um, you were trying, you were pushing a, I, I can't remember how Gary Newbrow said it. I think he said that you wanted that project to move forward. Oh, he's, Gary Newbrow said that when you were the engineer over, um, sanitary, that you wanted him to move forward with something even though the plan wasn't fully in place.
Okay, I'm not clear on that, uh, statement. And the only reason I say that, my tenure with the sanitary was over in twenty twenty and that the petitions were actually submitted for that project in August seventeenth of twenty twenty one and accepted by the Board of Commissioners on August twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. So I'm, I'm hearing it just based on hearsay, but obviously I wasn't associated with that project once it moved forward whatsoever.
Uh, this is Gary Newbrow, the sanitary engineer.
Go ahead, Gary.
All right, uh. Randy, the project that we were referencing was Elm Road Water. When you were sanitary engineer, you're the one that directed me to move that project to be our OP W C application. Although we didn't have enough funding in place. It, it wasn't Crane Drive.
I don't dispute that one bit, Gary, the Elm Road, but as you know, there were challenges with Elm Road uh, that came up in the lack of dealing with the city of Cortland and the change to Warren, plan changes, scope changes and several other factors that led into that project and some of those delays.
All right. And that's what I was trying to explain to the commissioner and that's the one that we are, uh, the contract was awarded today and we are moving forward with that and that is my last, uh, delinquent OP W C project.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that up because it, it came back that I had jumped the gun and I wanted to be very clear on that. Uh, I'm not the one that expanded that project, uh, whatsoever. That was done after the fact and I fully support that it was expanded. I think that was good for the community and good for the county.
Hey Randy, the other one we had was item number twenty one. Commissioner Frenchco abstained from authorizing us to advertise for sealed proposals for the county engineers, office upgrades, new windows, new mechanical systems and new electrical panels. So you were brought up in that one also. Morrow and I voted yes to move forward with the advertising for it. She abstained because she said she didn't have all the information.
I didn't have any information. I, I, and I did say that I know that you have a need, but I think it's important to, um, review what we're voting on, uh, so that we could check with you potentially or wherever it's going on to make sure that everything is included and that it's correctly covering all of your needs there, uh, rather than just voting on something blindly without receiving a copy of it. And so I, for that reason, I felt it was necessary to abstain, uh, or at least wait till the end of the meeting to vote on it in order to get a copy of the proposal that we were, or what, 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 what the clerk had, but what she did not share with us. So that's, that's it. Huh?
Oh, no, and I understand. I, I understand there's differences of opinion and what have you and philosophies and, and so forth. Uh, I appreciate the improvements to the building. The staff does. Obviously, we've had a lot of communication with, uh, the director of maintenance on these projects and we appreciate, you know, moving forward. If at any point in time, there's more, if there's any information that I can submit moving forward, just let me know, uh, if we've missed something in providing it. But obviously we're in dire need of the windows, the heating and air conditioning units and just the overall upgrades to the electrical service. It's been duly noted for many years now.
Well, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the things is, uh, I want to know if you have, do you have it? Cause evidently our staff has it and they just haven't shared it with me. And I apologize for asking you because it should be our maintenance director or our clerk that provides that to the commissioners before they vote on it. Unfortunately, I'm asking you, um, does, does, do you have a copy of it?
He's not going to advertise for the proposal. That's us.
I understand, but we're voting on it. So we need to make sure that everything in it satisfies what he needs at his building. And that's all I was saying. Engineer, do you have a copy of, of what's going out?
I do not and I didn't hear it earlier, but all of my communications have been with your building superintendent. And I was certainly aware, uh, the upgrades to the electrical service, the windows, uh, the HVAC, uh, and maybe there was a few other, uh, miscellaneous items in there as well at our Cortland shop. But he has certainly kept me, uh, aware of moving forward, but I don't know all the specific details.
Yeah, I don't have anything and I want to make sure that if there's any, um, uh, fire rated panels, that they're all covered. Um, because I know that's been a problem in Trumbull County and, and without being able to look at that, I want to make sure that all those things are included. So.
Okay. Any other questions for me then?
We're good.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Commissioner. Well, entertaining.
And I, I do want to say it was, um, the granted, it was great to see, uh, that moving forward with the projects that are going to benefit the area with the, uh, downtown in Warren, um, it was funded. I know that the commissioners were.
What are you talking about?
You mean the potential project?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and it was nice to see, I, I believe.
Well, they're still asking for our money as you know, so we need to act on that.
Turn your radio off or your TV on. Excuse me for one second. Commissioner Frenchco, can I have that dongle back please, since you're no longer using it?
Yeah, hang on. Just hang on a second, please. And we're, he just granted a point of personal.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait here.
Take your time.
I'd like, I'd like to speak before you close out the meeting.
Okay, sir, you'll be next.
Okay.
It was a three hour meeting that we could have had done in about thirty-five minutes.
Yes.
Without so many roadblocks and obstruction.
All of it could have been answered at a workshop where it should have been.
Correct.
Can I speak now? I don't need to wait for her.
Yeah, we, we, we gave point of personal privilege. I'll give her another minute. We have Tim up just ahead of you. As soon as we finish up with him, we'll come to you online, sir. Making no, no heat today. About one time.
Yeah, that's a lot. Actually, I could keep my coat on.
Hey, Tim, you can continue. Uh, Commissioner Frenchco, we gave you a dongle to be able to display your laptop on the TV. Can I have that back, please?
Okay. Officially, hang on.
Okay, caller on the line, go ahead and identify yourself, please.
Yeah, this is Sean Shook, Trumbull County. Yeah, this is Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I see these meetings are still getting worse and worse every week and today was, uh, today was really nuts. Uh, it, it clearly seems that Ms. Frenchco is on something, maybe multiple somethings. She got up in the middle of a meeting and walked out and got sunglasses. She's been sitting in the meeting with sunglasses on. Is she trying to hide her eyes for some reason? Uh, her speech is off today, her train of thought is off. She's gotten lost in the meeting multiple times. She's unprepared. Now, the Board of Commissioners as a board, or maybe the sheriffs sitting there in the room, somebody's gotta do something. You need to drug test her before she leaves that building and gets in her car. She might kill somebody. Now, I've seen photos online of her sitting in her car with her name on the side of it at a gas station in what appears to be her passed out behind the wheel. Now, enough is enough. Somebody's gonna get hurt here. Somebody needs to drug test her now. Thank you.
It's like responding to the letter from Steve Charles. You can't, you just can't do it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.